We all take your seats, we're gonna come to order. I'd like to call the order of the regular meeting of the Clear Lake City Council Redevelopment Assistant Agency held here at Clear Lake City Hall, Council Chambers 14050, Olympic Drive in Clear Lake, California 95422. Today is Thursday, April 27th, it is 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Here.
Mayor Perdott?
Present.
And Councilmember Overton is absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Harris, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I believe we have a pastor here for invocation. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Thank you, my name's Chris Rags and I serve as the pastor of the Nazarene Church here in Clear Lake, and I also have the honor of serving the men and women of the Lake County Fire Protection District as the chaplain, so thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir, for being here.
Let us pray. Holy God, one of the things you have taught me in my life is if you are presenting a problem without a willingness to be part of the solution, you're just uselessly complaining. Lord, I stand before you with a group of individuals who have chosen to be part of the solution in a city with many challenges. I thank you for their leadership as well as their desire to serve. We thank you for our city's diverse culture, for rich beauty, and for those willing to leave. Please bless the city council with your wisdom and insight this evening as they consider the various issues before them. Dear Lord, if you are by our side, nothing can stand against us. We ask your guidance and your wisdom in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Mr. Folsom, the committee changes the agenda.
We will on the consent, but not on the normal agenda.
Okay, which item's removing on the consent? Is that your desire?
Yes. We're removing item number seven, which is the dispensary. We are also going to remove the minutes of the March 23rd council meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Any changes or any items wishing to be pulled by the council? So now I'll open it up to the public, any member of the public wishing to pull something that's on a consent agenda? Now's your time to let us know. Please step forward.
Okay, my name's Vado, I'm Sersey. I live on 27th Avenue next to the agenda regarding 16303 27th Avenue. Twelve years ago, the owner-
Okay, we're gonna hear that.
I'm sorry.
So I'm just asking for what is on our consent agenda?
I'm sorry, I thought that was-
That's okay, well, we'll get to you in a minute.
Okay.
It may be a little longer than that, but we'll get to you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
I should've asked if I could approach the manager.
It's okay, I can't find him, really. Anyway, anyone else wishing to change our consent agenda before we move forward? Seeing no one, I will close public comment or request. Gentlemen, drive a motion. No, I need to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the agenda with the changes noted.
I'll second that. Have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, and Councilmember Overton is absent. Very good, moving on to announcements from our closed session. Madam Clerk?
There's no reportable action from the closed session.
Very good, thank you, ma'am. Then, I would like to invite the Vice Mayor to join me at the podium. We have a presentation waiting.
If there is anybody here to receive the Autism Awareness Month-
Proclamation.
Proclamation, please come on up.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I'll read this, but first I want to say a little personal statement. I've been reading a book with my wife by Hank Smith, who has been going around our county and our community, giving presentations about autism and his experience as a father with his son, and his son has been presenting with him. And I've learned so much from this book, and me and my wife have cried while reading this book because we see our son in every single chapter that we read. This is something that we should all be aware of, and the more we're aware, the more we can understand and help those around us who are born with autism, who eventually have autism. I would never change my son for who he is because him having autism is what makes him the son that happens, the son that knows. So, thank you for being able to be honest. Autism Awareness Month, April 2017. Whereas today, public health officials estimate that one in every 86 children in America is growing up on the autism spectrum.
One in 45.
It hasn't been updated, thank you.
CDC updated it last month. One in 45 children.
It is a reality that affects millions of families every day, from the classroom to the job market. And while our country has made progress in supporting Americans with autism spectrum disorders, ASDs, we are only beginning to understand the factors behind the challenges they face. On Autism Awareness Day, we recommit to helping individuals on the autism spectrum reach their full potential. And, whereas autism is a lifelong developmental disability that manifests itself during the first three years of life, and results from a neurological disorder that affects the functioning of the brain, mostly affecting children in many countries irrespective of gender, race, or socioeconomic status, and characterized by impairments in social interaction, problems with verbal and nonverbal communication, and restricted repetitive behavior, interests, and activities. And, whereas the prevalence and high rate of autism in children in all regions of the world and the consequent development challenges to long-term healthcare, education, training, and intervention programs undertaken by government, nonprofit organizations, and the private sector, as well as its tremendous impact on children, their families, communities, and society is deeply concerning. And, whereas early diagnosis and appropriate research and interventions are vital to the growth and development of the individual. And now, therefore, the city council of the city of Clear Lake does hereby proclaim April 2017 as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Clear Lake, and urges citizens to take measures to raise awareness throughout society, including at the family level regarding children with autism, dated this 27th day of April 2017, signed by our Mayor, Russell Perdott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say?
Yes, I just tried. So, you heard me correct it, but last month the CDC updated it, and it is one in 45 children right now. It's the fastest-growing developmental disorder in America. More than 200,000 cases in America in one year, which is a lot, and it's increased by 119.4% since 2000. I'm a mom of three autistic children, and I can't tell you, every time I'm in the community, I meet somebody that either has an autistic child or knows someone with autism. And if you could just Google autism, that would be amazing, because then we can help our community understand those folks that are here, that want our support, that want to be accepted as a part of our community, because they are such wonderful people. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
Mr. Robey, I understand you have a presentation you would like to make.
I do.
Thank you for being here.
Can you hear me? I'm here tonight, and thank you for having me. As the chairperson of our local public access television station board, we call it the PEG Board. For those folks who may not be familiar with it as you are, I'd like to just take a minute to describe what the PEG station is. We're a public television station, we're not a profit making station. We were created by an agreement between the city of Clear Lake, the city of Lakeport, and the county of Lake. We're governed by an agreement between those three entities, which established this board of directors. There's a representative from the city, which is Lieutenant, there's a representative from the city of Lakeport, there's a representative from the county, I'm the county's representative. And then there's, we have a representative from the educational community, and that's Brock Falkenberg, county superintendent of schools, and we also have a public representative, who's a fellow named Eric Koffler, he's a teacher over at Kelseyville High School and a coach. Anyway, PEG stands for Public Education and Government, and that's what we are, that's our mission basically, is to provide programming that you can't find on commercial stations. We broadcast this meeting live right now, being broadcast. We broadcast, we're supervising these meetings. We broadcast other public meetings that are of interest, such as candidates forums and things like that. We have, in the past, broadcast college classes, and we also broadcast other content, that's what we call shows, of educational value. But the most interesting part of the PEG thing is the public part, because part of our mission is to try to provide equipment and space and training so that local people who want to learn how to make little TV shows can learn how to produce their own shows, and we will play them on our station. We are working with people, some of the people at the high school level, we are also working with folks at the college. Bruno knows what we've tried, we haven't gotten there yet, but that's just a little background on what we do. So, part of the agreement says that the PEG station presents an annual report to each of the three government entities. I've already done my shtick before the Board of Supervisors, and I'm here tonight to give you our annual report. I'll try to make it short and concise. Basically, to understand how PEG works, you need to know that we have two separate funds of money, and we can't mix them. One we call our operating fund, and the other is the capital fund. The operating fund is, the primary source of revenue for that are the three government entities. Each entity kicks in a certain amount of money each year to help fund the operations. It's not a lot of money, it's less than $20,000 a year total for all three entities. But, the good news is, our capital fund, a little over two years ago, the three government entities got together and approved something that's allowed under the law where we receive 1% of MediaCom's revenue. It can only be spent on capital expenditures, which means we can't pay staff, we can't use it for any kind of operational, ongoing, regular expenses, but we can buy equipment, if we had enough money, we could buy our own building. The nice thing about this is that we've been talking about what projects we want to do, and we've been saving this money up. Currently, in our operating budget, we've got a little over $20,000. In our capital budget, we've got a little over $100,000. And we are beginning to spend money on our projects. Our first project is to equip this room with three cameras, one on each side and one in the back, and the mixing and broadcast equipment in the back room back there, so that we'll be able to broadcast the council meetings and other meetings in this chamber with the same kind of quality of sound and video that they have at the board meetings. When you have a presentation on the wall over there, or over here, we'll be able to take the camera there and zoom in on it, so the people can actually read what it says. Anyway, it's really exciting for us, and we're hoping to actually, we've been researching it until we're driving ourselves crazy, we're hoping to actually make the purchase, order the equipment next week. We're also going to, once we do it here and figure out how to do it right, we're gonna do the city of Lakeport. But we also have other projects, and one of them is, we've been talking with the city manager about the use of one of the rooms out at the community center to use as a little studio. We don't have a studio space. Our broadcast equipment is located in the city's old vending machine room, and it's just not big enough to be a studio. We're hoping to set one up at the college, but that's been kind of delayed, I guess, is the right word?
Right.
Anyway, so, we're gonna set up a little studio out there, and we're gonna have classes. It'll be really nice, especially for the seniors, if they want to learn how to do it, they could make shows of, you know, their grandkids' soccer games, or whatever they want. You know, that's the thing about the PEG station, anything goes as long as it doesn't violate federal law.
Good.
Well, yeah, of course. Certain shows we show after 10 o'clock. Anyway, we can't regulate content, but we can regulate the time that they're broadcasting. Okay, so anyway, we're gonna set up this studio out of the community center. And then, our fourth major project that we're hoping to do this coming here is to purchase internet streaming equipment, so that we can actually stream our shows live on the internet, and not just on, not just broadcast for cable subscribers. And that's really the way of the future. That's, 10 years from now, probably most television content will be on the internet. That's what my friends in TV industry think. Okay. Well, that pretty much tells you what we are and what we want to do. I just want to take a minute, though, and thank, well, I want to thank some of the city folks, because the city handles our money and our purchasing and all those through the city, and I want to thank their personnel and staff for doing all the accounting for us. It really, you know, it's a burden that we don't have to deal with. Very helpful. Very close, have been great to work with on the, we're gonna work out the details on using this room out there, and there'll be an agreement, hopefully pretty soon, right, coming before the council to approve, so I'll be back here saying, "Please approve this." And then, I want to thank Melissa Swanson, who's been great, she's on top of all of our GoDaddy and our internet stuff. When the payments come due, she lets us know, because they notify her, because it all goes through her. Anyway, city staff's been great to work with, the city is invaluable to us. And finally, last but not least, I want to thank Beth Keiman, who is our vision manager. She's back there with the camera, videoing the show, and-
It's called content.
Content, thank you. The video content. You know, think about it, right now, there's a camera back there on the tripod, and it's got a little microphone on the top of it, and that's it. I mean, when there's a lot of people in the room and there's a lot of noise, the audio quality goes down, sometimes it's really hard to hear. When we have this new setup, we'll be tapping directly into the PA system, so we'll have a pure signal, and it'll be great. So, we're all excited about this, and you're the first project. So, that's my report. Any questions? Thank you.
Actually, I just had a couple of questions for you. It seems like the push is gonna be towards the concept of introducing more content, obviously, and utilization of a studio would be the catalyst to that, I would assume. What I'm wondering is if there's a possibility that we'd be looking towards ways of encouraging the general public to participate, maybe to come up with their own sort of a show, and to work with them, and to get them into the studio time, and actually develop even something as simple as a little talk show or sitcom or something like that?
Sure.
Yeah, and that's the kind of thing, I think that people don't realize that they can participate in that, so maybe-
You're right on.
Maybe a push for that, to get that public knowledge other. The other thing that I was gonna say is that I think the real success story on PEG is gonna be in relevant content, and content that's up to date, up to what we're looking for. What I really wonder is if there'd be a possibility of seeing at some point fishing reports, and maybe local news on location, direct broadcast from locations during, let's say, an event, for example, when we were experiencing the fires and the updates on the fires, we could actually have somebody with their video camera on location, and maybe do a tie-in from even a smartphone, and direct feed and feed to Channel 8, and then we would really utilize that source, so-
You're the alternate on the PEG Board.
I am, I am. I'm giving a degree, Ben. That's where you're going.
Hey, you've got it, because that's one of the things, I didn't have it on my list, because it's probably gonna be on our list for next year, though, is to purchase a vehicle and equip it with the kind of equipment that we can use to go out in the field and do live broadcasts.
Well, you know, I happen to know that we have some people in our community that actually like to generate videos, and I've seen this on, through Facebook. Now, why wouldn't we tie the two things and marry our community with the ability to gain access to a thing like this? And, for example, Nicole in the back, I know she's very involved in CC Perse. It would be really unique to incorporate some of the images and video that they're taking on a regular basis in their efforts to clean up our community, and present that to the community via this platform, because I think this platform is way underutilized.
I agree with you completely, and the only thing about, if you want to make a show and broadcast it on PEG, it has to meet some minimal qualifications.
Right.
It has to be, you have to be able to see what the video is, you know, it's-
Right, right.
-clear enough to see it, and it's gotta be, the audio has to be clear enough that you can hear what people are saying, and it has to have a little title at the beginning of the show, and some credits at the end, but that's about it.
Well, I'm very impressed on your efforts, I gotta tell you that, just the updating, the fact that you guys have saved up and banked funds for the potential expansion of these things, and the addition of a studio, which everything fits right into this, I just really appreciate the efforts that the PEG Board has made on this stuff, so-
Good, you can help us.
I figured we were going there.
Okay, well, thank you all.
I have a question for you as well. You mentioned putting the show or the PEG, allowing it to be on the internet, does that include live streaming of public meetings such as this?
Yes, absolutely. And just let me say one thing about Facebook, because people can put shows on Facebook, obviously, and YouTube, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, but if you put your content on YouTube, they own it, right? I said that way with Facebook?
Probably, probably.
So, all I'm saying is, if somebody wants to produce content, give it to us first, the show, before you give it to somebody else, and then they end up owning it, and you can't show it without their permission.
Thank you.
Good point, thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Next, we have a presentation by some of our local heroes, the Citizens Care for Clear Lake, CC Perse, on the Gems of Clear Lake.
I have a slide presentation that's gonna be going on behind me while I'm talking. My name is Molly Lang, and I'm one of the members of Citizens Care for Clear Lake, and-
If you speak into the mic, they might be able to hear you better on TV land.
Okay. My name is Molly Lang, and I'm a member of Citizens Care for Clear Lake. We are a nonprofit organization that operates underneath NCO, the umbrella of NCO, and our goal is to clean up debris around Clear Lake. We do the Adapta Highway every second Saturday of the month, from Lower Lake up to 18th Avenue, and we would love it if anybody would come and join us at Carl's Jr., about 9 o'clock the second Saturday of every month. One of the ways, one of the things that we do is try to raise money for dump fees. So, we had a garden tour here in Clear Lake on April the 8th, and it was extremely successful. We had a lot of volunteers that helped make it happen, we had six residences and two community gardens that were on the tour. We made over $3,600 from donations and from ticket sales, so that was very successful. We had an average of 80 people visit each residence, and I think people had a really good time. We had 108 visitors total, and these are photographs of the different gardens that were on the garden tour, and we had visitors from Kelseyville, and Calistoga, and Lakeport, and all kinds of different places come and see how beautiful Clear Lake was. And we got a lot of positive feedback from the people that came to the city, people that said, "You know, we really don't come to Clear Lake that often," and we will now, and we'll talk about it more, about how beautiful the city is. We had lots of volunteers help. We had a Montai exhibit, Arlene's house was on, that she's had her garden for over 60 years, and people said that that was their favorite garden, and I said, "Well, give me 35 more years, and mine will be nearly as beautiful." Are there any questions? Okay, they had on the agenda that it was a competition, it was not a competition, it was just a garden tour.
And thank you for doing that.
You bet.
Thank you for all the good work you did.
And if I can say, I went on that garden tour, and it really was amazing to be able to go through, and that labyrinth especially was really very unexpected to me, and if you haven't been out and seen it, it really is fabulous.
Thank you, sir. And then, our last presentation for the evening is a presentation by Children's Museum of Art and Science, CMOS, on the Wildlife Clear Lake Youth Public Art Project. Carolyn Jarrett.
And our art house gallery was definitely brought, right?
That's right. Don't forget to speak at the mic.
Okay, thank you. Although this is only billed as a project from, for the Children's Museum of Art and Science, this is actually a collaboration between the two groups. My name is Carolyn Jarrett, and I'm with the Children's Museum of Art and Science, and this is Stephanie Figaroa, and she's the owner of the Art House Gallery here in Clear Lake. So, I'm gonna speak first, just for a moment, about this new program, this youth art project. It's an ongoing program that's targeting grade 6 to 12 for public, private, and home schools of youth, in which students create murals which depict local wildlife. These murals will then be professionally mounted on businesses and buildings within the project area. This participation in this program is free for students. The purpose of this program is to enrich our community environment by providing student-centered, student-created public art. It's to develop the awareness of and appreciation for the diversity of wildlife in Lake County, to help young people foster a sense of connectedness to our community, and to showcase the talents of our youth. The project area is Clear Lake, Lower Lake, Clear Lake Oaks, and Spring Valley. The students can pick any local wildlife for their subject, bird, fish, mammal, insect, or reptile, and students can also submit more than one entry. Businesses who wish to sponsor a mural will be asked to pay for the cost of the materials and mounting only. This is not a fundraising event for our two organizations, this is a public service program which we are developing. We have asked service groups and individuals for donations to help create a fund to reduce expenses for businesses. The mural will be painted by students using top-quality exterior paint on a four-by-four sheet of plywood, it will be framed by a one-inch border, and will have a plaque stating the student's name, the creature depicted, and a grade. We estimate that the cost will be under $400, including the hardware and mounting by a professional. So, this is sort of a takeoff on the quilt trail, the idea, and just like with the quilt trail, this is not that something that's gonna happen one time, and then it's gonna be over. We have been working with the schools and also with individual students- We have been working with the schools and also with individual students, and we think that over time, as students see that here's a mural that's mounted and here's a mural that's mounted, that more and more students will get involved and more and more businesses will say, hey, you know what, we also would like to have a mural on our business. And Stephanie is going to address more the art side of it. Come speak to the microphone.
My name is Stephanie Figueroa, the owner of the Art House Gallery, and I'm sure everybody knows where it's located. And if they don't, it's located behind the health clinic over on the corner. Been there for a while, we're growing. Currently, I've been working with all the teachers in the Unified School District and going into the classrooms and teaching art and showing the students what we're looking for for your boards. This is kind of a sample of creature that we have.
She'll be there.
And what's going to happen is when these students get their artwork on the twelve-inch by twelve-inch paper, which we're going to display on May twentieth at the Art House Gallery, and the businesses can view the art, but as we were going to say, it's ongoing through the summer. So the sponsored art is going to be, the students of the sponsored art is going to go onto these workshops, which will thank the Woodland College to provide us a classroom to do this in. And we're going to take this art and we're going to reproduce it into the four-by-four boards, which will be kind of this concept. But students can get creative, because they might add a little background, put some ducks flying in the sky, or, you know, because it's like their little mini murals. So we're going to have an art show on May twentieth between two and five. And, let's see, I skipped. So during the summer, we're going to start collecting. So right now, I'm doing the Unified School District. There's other areas that I haven't touched yet, like some special needs, some of the alternative education schools, autism group, people services, that group I still have in touch for doing art classes. So I'm physically going in and doing art classes and going and checking on them. And it's kind of exciting, because they're coming up with some really, really interesting features. Let's skip to my next now. Sponsoring, the students will get the opportunity to reproduce these boards into these workshops that we're going to have for the summer. This is going to give the opportunity for these students to have something fun to do in the summer. It's not going to cost the students anything. It's a free art program for them to have experience in reproducing their art. So currently, I've been, we've got over fifty-four hundred hits online after this project, even though, you know, a lot of people are pointing out about it through Facebook, which is kind of exciting. So if you're, and then we're going to have like a portfolio on Facebook, which will be kind of like student art for the Wildlife of Clear Lake Art Project, where people can go and they can, as we get the art, I'll post them, and they could see what they want. And then they can come to the gallery or email us at clearlakearthousegallery@gmail.com. And they, and I can give them the application of a formal form of actually adopting the art for sponsoring and for building. And we're also asking for donations to help other businesses to defer their costs from having the cost of whatever cost for the project for their artworks to be mounted and produced. Okay, are there any questions?
Well, thank you. So what we're asking the council today is we're basically inviting you to come to the May twentieth art show, because we're hoping that the city will be interested in sponsoring a, an art mural, either on the city building or on the.
The visitor center.
Of the visitor center.
Or maybe inside.
Right. So we're hoping that you will come to our art show, and that one of the student works will catch your eye, and you will say, yes, obviously, you would love to support this program by having student art on a city building. And it is a public event, so that it will be in the paper, and so the public is obviously invited to come to the art show, and anybody who has a four-by-four space, either inside or outside, is invited to sponsor a, an art square.
And Red Bud Light Library.
Oh, yeah. So Red Bud Library and the Crossroads are two who for sure have told us that, yes, they're sponsoring. And I have a whole list of other businesses who are coming to the art show with an eye that if they see something they like, they definitely will agree to sponsor something. So it's totally up to, if you see something you like, great, you're going to decide to sponsor it. And we're only asking you to pay for the cost of materials, as I said. This is not a fundraising event. It's strictly going to be the cost of materials, and it will be professionally mounted, because obviously, you know, we don't know.
We are trying to.
Right.
Display art in our diverse meeting. Okay, that's it. Any questions for us?
Yes.
I just want to make a comment. In many places that I've lived in or visited, murals create a whole new, different type of beautification. We're always talking about beautification here, and I think that you're instigating a very positive project. So thank you so much.
Very good, thank you. What's going on these topics? Get back here, get back here. Councilmember Harris has a question.
You saw I had a question, you ran away on me there.
Wait, we're so excited for his compliment, we just got overwhelmed.
Leave him high note. I couldn't agree more with Bruno here. I think that the city of Woodland is a prime example of how incorporating the arts community into your downtown can completely transform the way that the community operates. Woodland, California went from a little bit of a rough time to now a very thriving time, and it's very beautiful. And they've actually taken a lot of the things you would see on a regular basis and think of them as, you know, utilitarian-type things, and turn those into beautiful works of art. And I just think it's amazing. And we have way more art in our community, we just aren't utilizing it properly. You guys are bringing that to light, we appreciate that. I just want you to reiterate one more time, it's May twentieth, the time and location.
Two to five at the Art House Gallery. One, two, whoops, one, five, two, one, oh, Lake Shore Drive.
Perfect, that's what I needed. Thank you so much, lady.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope to see you all there.
All right. As we swiftly move on to public comment, public comment is a time where you can come and address the council on any item not on our agenda. So if it's an item that you want to talk about and it's not on the agenda, this is your time. We allow you three minutes to make your presentation after you introduce yourself. Remember that the council members cannot respond to questions asked. We can only take the information, because it's not an agendized item, and to respond and debate would be a Brown Act violation. So we have two people who have requested to talk about animal control in Clear Lake, and the first is Rita, who I see standing up.
Hi.
Come on up, Rita.
Hi, I'm the.
Hello.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody here. I want to thank everybody here for coming to my event, because, you know, I was not in good grace with you guys for a while. But I want to thank you, and Nick, I'm so happy that you're on the council. Okay, first of all, I want to tell you, I'm here from Animal Coalition, because we want to help animal control. Okay? And we want to, we want to help them in a big, big way, and we want to help the city of Clear Lake, because we love this place. Okay? So we want to join forces with you guys, if you'll let us, okay? And there's a lot of people that came here tonight, because they feel the same way, because we love this city. And we have a wonderful lady that came up with this wonderful idea, and we want to propose something to you. Okay? But I'm here just to tell you that I hope that you guys will come on board with us to do this. Okay? We want to have a fundraiser, and she's going to come up and tell you all about it. I don't even know where to start, but it's going to be beneficiary to the city in a big, big way. And everybody's going to help. It's not just going to be a few, it's going to be a lot of people. And we're going to help, and we're going to do everything we can, because we've got a wonderful officer now, and we really like her. And everybody likes her, because she's got the passion, and she really cares about her job. And people see the way she acts about the animals and everything, and we're so happy. Don't you guys agree out there?
Yeah.
So anyway, what I want to tell you is we have a wonderful woman up here. Jeanne, would you come up here, please? Okay, and then I want to ask you something, just one thing before she tells you her proposal. I just want to say one thing, and I know you guys can't discuss anything, but the fees that they have for animals to be adopted is way too high for Clear Lake, because if you guys compare it to all the other cities and even Lakewood, it's way too high and people can't afford them. And that's all I have to say. So have a good day, everybody, okay?
Thank you.
Bye.
And next, we have Jeanne Yenge, that would like to speak.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Jeanne Yenge. I'm here with a group of concerned citizens. We would like to address the growing problem in Clear Lake with the growing packs of dogs attacking animals, killing cats, and most recently, attacking a woman, causing her to be taken to the hospital. It is only a matter of time before a child is mauled or killed. If and when that happens, the city will be financially responsible for not meeting its burden to protect the community. That being said, we all understand your impossible situation here. It seems as if the problem is too hard to bear. However, it must be addressed. The new animal control officer, Cherie Richards, is dedicated to making a difference in Clear Lake, but without the financial cooperation of the city and the backing and support from the community, she is doomed to fail. Clear Lake Animal Control's bad past needs a fresh approach and a new start. Our group is planning a large fundraiser. The intent is to raise eight to ten thousand dollars to be donated to Clear Lake Animal Control. We would ask the city council for their commitment to match these funds for the purpose of spay and neuter, additional staff for phone calls, networking for adoptions, and enforcing our current spay and neuter and licensing laws. In addition, irresponsible pet owners need to be cited for allowing their animals to run free against city ordinance, and the shelter needs to increase its hours of operation to better serve the community. One officer cannot do this without all of our support. In closing, by matching our funds, you, the city council, will establish to our community your sense of caring, compassion, concern, and safety for the citizens of Clear Lake. The name we have chosen for our fundraiser is New Beginnings for Clear Lake Animal Control. It will be held at the Moose Lodge in Clear Lake Oaks on July eighth, from four to ten p.m. I hope to see you all there. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I don't see our next speaker. I think she left after we made the, I believe she left after the autism presentation. So we'll move on. Anyone else wishing to address the council on an item not on our agenda, please step forward, this is your time. Seeing no one coming forward, I will close public comment. We move on to our consent agenda. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Just as a reminder, I did pull March twenty-third minutes off, as well as item number eight. Not number eight, number seven, that's right.
Anyone from the public wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda or discuss? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We're back to the same thing, sir, we're going to talk about it in a minute.
That's what a consent agenda is, I kind of knew it was.
That's okay.
I just wasn't sure what, you know, what it brings up.
I'll call on you first one.
Okay.
There you go. Any changes to the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public and bring you back for action.
Can I make a comment on the dog animal control thing?
Please.
I moved it this, so I don't understand the dog.
Well, this is your time to speak to the council on a non-agendized item, which the animal control issue is non-agendized, so.
Okay.
This is your time, please step forward. Introduce yourself and tell us what your issue is.
My name's Stephanie Hampton, and I live up in Clear Lake Park. And on the animal control thing, there actually was a child attacked, and it was my daughter back in October. And the two dogs were euthanized. It was Jim, who was animal control at that time, and my daughter was mauled pretty bad. And Chris Neely owned the dogs, and it was probably the seven or eight dogs that he owned that had been euthanized because they attacked. And he still owns two of the puppies, that the pit bull was the mama, and the wolfhound that he owned attacked her. And if it wasn't for her boyfriend, these two dogs were dragging her off into the bushes. And she's a big girl, she's five-nine, and these two dogs are dragging her off into the bushes, mauling her. And she's, she had seven dog bites, and the ambulance had to come and get her, and it was bad. So it's, there was a child that was attacked. And I live in the park, and two German Shepherds have already come after my loving old son aggressively, three times. So it's getting bad. So I support, I don't know who the animal control officer is now. Cherie Richards. I've talked to her on the phone about the German Shepherds. I haven't met her, but I have talked to her, so whatever.
You can also contact Sergeant Martin Snyder of Clear Lake Police Department.
I think I've talked to him on the phone as well about the German Shepherd, so.
Thank you.
Whatever I need to do to support them, I'll do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Please step forward.
Do I have to sign in?
No, sir.
My name is Alan Polillo. I live at thirty-nine-hundred Bayless Avenue, which is the address of the Cactus Grill. Everybody knows that place. This morning.
Oh, it's, say, seven o'clock?
The two pit bulls next door got loose. They went and tried to attack one of the employees. And she's standing at the gate, shivering with fear. Well, I went out there and escorted her to her car, which I should not have to do. Kevin Ness of Kevin Ness Jewelers, he was attacked. He had to carry his big, huge dog over to his store from the same two pit bulls. They went after me. I know my animals. It's all I need. It's right next door, that steel fence, next door, that's kind of on my corner, that's where they live. I had to talk with the guy. If I would have had a gun on me, I'd have shot her right dead, right there on the spot. I'm sorry, that's how I feel. Animals should be controlled. These are uncontrolled animals.
And it's not the animals, it's the owners.
That's right, it's the owners. Definitely the owners, I agree one hundred percent.
Then you go after the pergiors.
Thank you.
The owners.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, I'll bring you back for their consent agenda one more time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the consent agenda, as is minus number six and number seven.
I second that.
Not minus number six, just minus the minutes for the twenty-third.
I have the minutes of the twenty-third, which still includes the minutes of March ninth.
Can I now second that? Have a motion to second, all those in favor? All right. Opposed, none, and councilmember Overton is absent. Then moving along, I have number seven, Mr. Poulsen. This would be the second reading of ordinance one-nine-six-dash-two-zero-one-seven, ordinance of City Council, City of Clear Lake, adding Article five-dash-two-four to the Clear Lake Municipal Code entitled Marijuana Dispensary Regulations, and repealing Article five- Regulations, and repealing Article 5.20 of the Clearlake Municipal Code entitled Medical Marijuana Dispensary Regulations. Now, Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, kind of at the last minute here, we had received a letter from Beck Law stating a couple of different issues that they have with the marijuana dispensary ordinance. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention to see if you had any questions about the letter.
Thank you. If you guys could please orderly leave the building if you're not going to stay for the rest of the meeting. Take a pause while everybody leaves after the presentations, so others can hear.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible for a five-minute recess since I've only received this once sitting upon the dais, so I can review this material?
We're gonna take a five-minute break. We will return at 6:56. Let's continue. Mr. Folsom?
All right, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned, we, this letter came in like about four o'clock this afternoon. I thought it was worth at least addressing, so Chrissy has made some notes here, and she will kind of discuss it.
Thank you. We have it out on the table for those folks. Pick up on our agenda.
No, I didn't have time to make it.
Okay. Okay, so the letter you're referring to came from Beck Law PC, um, dealing with this item, and I'll refer over to council.
So it looks like the first issue, I'm assuming that the law firm represents a cooperative collective business that's operating in town legally under state law. When this ordinance, if you guys approve and pass the second reading, once it becomes effective, the way they've defined dispensary, the section that they're looking at, they say that they'll be unlawful until they receive a permit from the city, but I would say that's not the case, because if they're still operating as a cooperative or collective, we've defined that in the ordinance, and we've just defined marijuana dispensary in the ordinance. And the section requires you to get a permit before you operate as a marijuana dispensary, and we've defined that as a for-profit business selling to consumers. And, you know, remind you, the difference between that and a cooperative and collective is the cooperative, collective model under state law now is a membership of primary caregivers and qualified patients that are pooling resources to grow and distribute among their membership. So I would say that they, we would not ask a cooperative or collective to shut down under the new ordinance. We would give them the time, and we built into the ordinance where they get priority to receive the permit, so I don't think.
And don't they have till January 1st, 2019, to be able to fulfill that requirement?
I think that was the deadline we had in the ordinance.
So there's that transition right there.
Because the state law eventually phases out the cooperative, collective type of business. I'm sure they know all of that too, so they can't co, they can't operate indefinitely under that type of business structure. They have to get a state license and our local permit if you're requiring one in order to operate as a dispensary. So I don't think that we, they have an issue under number one. I think we agree that they should be able to continue to operate until they get a permit.
So, so just to clarify my perspective on this, it essentially allows for a transition of the type of business that they're doing, and they would have all the way until January of 2019 to make that transition, and in no way would currently affect the way they operate.
That's right.
Okay.
I don't know, in no way, but they could continue to operate until.
As in they couldn't operate in the new way, which is.
Without a permit. That's right. Number two, the intent of the ordinance is to allow the business to get a permit, the dispensary to get a permit, and then if the school or childcare facility, one of the businesses they can't locate within 600 feet from, if that business, if that type of business subsequently, not a business, entity subsequently locates within 600 feet, as long as they're continually operating with their permit and their renewal permits, they're allowed to continue operating. Um, and, you know, a school presumably needs some city approvals to go through, so you'd be aware of that as well. It would not be a compatible location, so the chances of that happening are slim to none, but we could add language to make that more clear, but I would say you'll interpret it that way. We would advise that you, and it also says, unless otherwise required by state law, the way state law operates is that it's like bar and tin, that you just can continue to operate. That way a school can't just locate right next to you and force you to shut down. So again, there's not, I don't think our, our ordinance will prevent what they won't under issue number two. Issue number three, the transfer of licenses. So a cooperative or collective, as I said, is, um, they're supposed to be operating under state guidelines as a nonprofit, and the type of business entity, I'm not, I'm not sure which type they're operating under, but it's presumably going to be different when they, when they turn themselves into a for-profit business and get a state license and, and the city permit. In that case, so because the cooperative or collective should just be members that are either using marijuana as a patient or, or can with a, because they have a recommendation, or they're a primary caregiver, I mean, those folks are not necessarily who you want to be running your business, and it could be, but in many cases, I would assume maybe when these businesses are transitioning to a for-profit business, they're going to add other, other business managers or other players that are not, you know, not a primary caregiver or a patient. So the city, you could allow them to transition without coming back and having city oversight, but the problem with that is if they add folks that aren't members of the cooperative or collective to their business management, you don't have any way to do a background check and make sure they're, you know, a secondary character or don't have any legal issues there. So some cities are requiring, in this scenario, for the business to come back and just get a whole new license or permit, and, which is a much more arduous process. We purposely built into our ordinance that they could come back, it is a simple sort of abbreviated process where as long as they get a background check and pass that, and the city council has a chance to review their business plan, essentially they get first shot at continuing with whoever they choose to add to their management as long as they pass, pass your inspection, whereas in another jurisdiction, they might have to start all over, and they may not even be, there may not even be any comments or licenses available to operate. So it's kind of a compromise, realizing that may be a more arduous process for them, but it still ensures they could continue operating as long as they put forth suitable business partners. I can answer questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harris?
So it sounds like the issue two that you talked about is really a planning thing. If we had a school or something that was proposing to go within 600 feet, it would be the similar situation, so we were proposing a dispensary to make sure that they stay that 600-foot distance away. So it gives us the opportunity in either, either direction to prevent that from taking place to start with.
Well, even as the ordinance is written and as we would interpret it, a school could not operate there. Well, I wouldn't say that. They could come in within 600 feet, but it would not, it wouldn't effectively prohibit the dispensary from continuing operations.
So in a sense, they're already grandfathered in?
That's right. They could continue to operate as long as they don't lapse on their renewal permit.
It seems to me that issue two is basically the request for that grandfathering clause, and it already exists.
Yeah, I, I think the language could be a little more precise, but because it also says that, unless state law prohibits it, we're patterning our practice after the state law, and the state law is going to treat it the same way. If you're already there and continue operation, a school could move in next door and you still don't have to shut down.
And the verbiage on issue two that we're discussing essentially just gives us the opportunity to, to make sure that anybody that's participating in the business structure of one of these, one of these operations, when it becomes a for-profit operation, is not a, um, a character that we wouldn't want participating, that sort of thing.
That's right. They still have to meet the same background check requirements, us, the other businesses that are, that are coming in, to make sure they haven't convicted of crimes that might make them unsuitable for running a dispensary. And you can look at, you know, the business plan and if there are any changes to location or anything.
And that, and that criteria pretty much fits into the state?
Um, the state, well, under the state law, if you're a cooperative or collective right now, you don't have to have any kind of permit, so they're not looking at, um, we, it's a complicated question. We would allow a cooperative or collective to come in right now and get the permit pending they're, changing their, their business structure, but the state law, you don't have to have any permit right now to be a cooperative or collective. You're just kind of coming in. They're not sort of looking at the transition, as you say, the state law. They're just looking at their application.
In our case, it's meeting the criteria of our process.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Again, on issue two, I understand what Councilman Harris was addressing, but should a business, let's say daycare, wish to open up within that 600 feet limit, would they be prohibited from doing so?
It doesn't work opposite. They could open up if they wanted to unless, you know, assuming they're meeting all of the other city and state requirements.
Would not affect a citizen from starting a business?
That's right. It just, it wouldn't, it also wouldn't cost the dispensary to become an illegal business because of that location.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from councilmembers? I'd like to open this up for public comment. Any questions on item seven? Please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close that. Bring you back to council for action. Councilmember Bennett?
Comment?
Yes, we're deliberating.
Okay, I brought up, I brought up at last meeting about a concern I had about the consumption of marijuana and products on site. On April 26th, the Press Democrat had an article about drug use eclipses alcohol in fatal wrecks. For the first time, more died using pot or opioids than liquor. For the first time, statistics show that drivers killed in crashes are more likely to be on drugs than drunk than using alcohol. And this is from a 2015, 2015 study, and that was a report released by the Governor's Highway Safety Association, which nationwide, and the Foundation for Advancing Alcohol Responsibility. Not that I believe everything, it's in the Press Democrat or any papers, so I went to websites, and it's true. Again, my concern is the approving of a lounge where marijuana can be consumed and, or inhaled, or however you want to determine, and then that person driving from there under the influence. And I don't care to discuss or debate licensed facilities, uh, bars or other places, because you can go in and consume one or two drinks and still drive and not be under the influence, but you can smoke one joint and drive from a dispensary down near the city hall and not even remember driving that far. That's fact. You're under the influence. So I just wanted to bring that up for the record and to my fellow council people, that now drug use has outstripped alcohol for the cause of fatalities nationwide. And I think we need to consider that when passing this ordinance, in particular 5-24.14 of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Vice Mayor?
I got a clarification I didn't quite hear at the beginning for when you described the article from the Press Democrat. Did it say that marijuana and opioids?
It said that 43% of drivers tested in fatal crashes in 2015 had used legal or illegal drugs, eclipsing the 37% who tested above the legal limit for alcohol. Of the drivers who tested positive for drugs, more than a third had used marijuana, and more than 9% had taken amphetamines. In the article, both are making a bail fee.
And so I want to say that if you have one drink or two drinks, please don't drive. I would, I would prefer that than just to say that it's okay to go ahead and drive, because everybody is different, whether they're heavyweight or lightweight. Depends on how many beers you drank in the past couple of years or couple of months, and maybe drinking one beer or two beers is like taking one or two hits off a joint rather than smoking the entire joint. And I think that it still comes down to, uh, adult responsibility. People can bring designated drivers with them. If they're a member, then they can all go inside. I agree that there are potential difficulties that can come from this, but there's also potential difficulties from not allowing a safe environment for people to be able to do those things. And so I, I think that my stance doesn't change on that, but I appreciate you bringing the article, and I'm saddened that people take risks and put other people's lives at risk by not thinking ahead.
Thank you for the comment on the side. Do we have an action?
I'll give it a shot. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve item number seven from the consent agenda. Do I need to read the entire title?
As submitted in the second reading.
Yeah, go ahead and make your motion to approve the ordinance and waive the reading of it in its entirety and read it by title only.
All right. I'd like to approve the ordinance number 196-2017, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Clearlake, adding Article 5-24 to the Clearlake Municipal Code entitled Marijuana Dispensary Regulations, and repealing Article 5.20 of the Clearlake Municipal Code entitled Medical Marijuana Dispensary Regulations, and waive any further reviews.
Of it in its entirety?
In its entirety.
Second? So a motion in a second. All those in favor, or actually, let's do a roll call though.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
And Mayor Firdo?
Councilmember Overton is absent. Moving on to item number 10, public hearing to confirm assessments in total of $52,500 for administrative penalties for failure to evade public nuisance in accordance with CMC, Clearlake Municipal Code Sections 1-5, 1-9, 10-1.6, 10-1.7, 10-1.9, 10-1.12, 10-2.2B, 10-2.4, 10-2.5, 10-2.6, 10-2.7, 10-2.8, 10-3.1, 10-3.3, 10-5, 10-5.6. Mr. Folsom, I think this is where you want to come up and speak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to actually introduce Code Enforcement Officer Steve Felber on the side. Okay, the purpose of the hearing. Consider and act upon any and all protest or proposed assessments of recovery of the costs of administrative penalties for failure to evade public nuisance. Upon consideration of the evidence and testimony, council may grant, grant the protest and revise the resolution to remove the assessments or deny protests and confirm the assessments as proposed, or modify, reduce the amount of assessments, and revise the resolution to reflect the modified assessments. Pre-hearing information. Property owners were given notice of the violations in adequate time to voluntarily correct the violations. Property owners failed to evade public nuisance on the said property within the prescribed Property owners were given notice of their right to appeal the imposition of administrative penalties. Property owners failed to submit in writing a notice of appeal of administrative penalty within the prescribed time allowed. Attached to the staff report is the proposed resolution confirming the assessment, statement of expenses for the proposed assessment, and supporting evidence. Staff recommends that council confirm all assessments as proposed. Property number 1, 3925 Marika Avenue, owner Elaine Goodrich, administrative penalty Okay, property number one, accumulation and/or storage of junk, garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Indurious to health, offensive to senses, obstruct, free use, enjoyment. Indurious to health, offensive to senses, obstruct, free use, enjoyment of property. Condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and visual blight. Violation of any provision of the Clear Lake Municipal Code. And I was deciding officer. Original pictures were taken on 5/9/2016. Truck full of garbage. Two pouches on the side. Current pictures were taken on 4/25/2017. Still a truck full of garbage, but they have made some dump runs. Some garbage in the back.
Okay, any other, any further innovation on this item? Property one?
When I was doing the pictures on the 25th, I did talk to the tenant, and she was out there cleaning, and she said she had done, I believe, three or four dump runs. It did look better from the first time I had been out there. I asked her if she got any of my notices. She said no, only one, but I always post them on the property. Then she told me that Town and Country was the property management, so I made a call to them today, and they called the current owner, who they called me today, and said that he would be here at the meeting and would comply.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open it up for testimony. I'll bring it back. Sir, you need to address this on property one.
Yeah.
Come on up.
The renter, the truck is gone.
You introduce yourselves.
Oh, I'm Lee. I'm going to tell most of the property owner.
Thank you, Lee.
The renters that live there, they cleaned up. The truck is gone and everything else too today. Why I wasn't getting any notices is because my sister gets the bill, and my house burned down, and a clay fire, so I wasn't paying attention to anything. I had to deal with my house. So I just got noticed today. I got called this morning, and then I called against him. And I told him I'll take care of it. When we made dump runs today, the truck is gone. We're cleaning up. I mean, we'll be done cleaning by the, over this weekend, we'll be done. So I got the renters here and everything else, and we're on top of it. It is, and my house burned down, so I wasn't, you know, it was just sure to hear that. Yeah, I was just going crazy, you know, so it was like, I got kids, you know, everything played to effect, but it wasn't an excuse for the trash and garbage. I do apologize to the city, but this is cleaned up, and we are cleaning up more and everything else, and we're going to paint the house and blah, 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 et cetera. So, and they got, they got garbage service today too, so they ordered, they ordered it today, but whatever they bring to cans, but we did like 12 dump runs today, and we want to do excellent rest tomorrow, and so on, so on, till it's all completely demolished.
I'd like to thank you for that, because it's our, our interest is to clean up the city.
Yes.
So that's, that's it. We don't want to penalize or find people, but sometimes that's what we have to do to try to get the job done.
Yes, and I'm with that. That's, this was my first day even knowing about the code enforcement, because he was sending letters to my sister's house. So it was the first day I ever knew about it, and then when he, but I got the calls.
Right on. Hands on the hill, like, on it. Appreciate that. If you don't mind staying right there.
Okay.
If council members have any questions for either our code enforcement officer or property owner, Councilmember Harris?
Do you feel that, as I'm directing this, Stephen Felder, do you feel that the progress has been made as described? Have you taken a look at this visually inspected since the progress has been made, or?
I haven't been out there too short.
Too short.
I was out there two days ago.
Okay.
There had been progress made, but there was still quite a bit of garbage.
Okay.
I have my dump receipts, but I think it's still being sent.
I was about to ask that.
Would that be, would that be okay to have him submit the?
Can you provide those to Mr. Felder?
Yes, I can.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions, Mr. Harris?
I just want to make one comment here.
Okay. Are there any questions you have to place first?
I was about to ask Mr. Felder if he had received any.
Here you go. Okay, Quackenbush Tuesday.
And I just want to reiterate Mr. Mayor's perspective on this. The entire intent of these hearings is to address issues that aren't being addressed, and the fact that you in very short time have stepped forward to make a huge effort in addressing the issue is commended.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I like to keep a clean property. I don't want to cause ripples in the water or anything. It's just that my mind's been summered totally.
Being a fire survivor, we.
Yeah, you know, just relocate kids and families, it's just a hell, but.
Appreciate you being here tonight.
Hey.
Mr. Felder, what do you have there?
What's that?
What, what did you receive? If you might read it into the record?
Yeah, one receipt for $16.
Are they dated today? Or?
Yes, 4/27, 4/27, and 4/27.
Quackenbush Tuesday.
And Quackenbush, 4/27. So it looks like we got 2, 4, over 6. I don't know how they say it. It just says quantity, four, six cubic yards maybe of garbage?
Okay.
And then one twin mattress.
Any other questions from the council members? I'd like to stay item one for now, and perhaps before we conclude this, you guys can work out whether he's going to want to pull this item for further review?
Okay. No problem.
And we may not take action on item one, but I'll leave that to the investigating officer, okay? That's a decision to make.
Okay. I'd like to note one more thing.
Go ahead, please.
I put a picture in the slideshow, for some reason it didn't come up, was a picture of the roof.
Okay.
There was shingles missing, and when I did talk to the renter, she said it did leak, so that would be something else that would definitely have to be taken care of.
Yeah, the leak, but yeah, the shingles flew off through the wind and all that stuff, so.
It's more than just a few shingles. It's quite a bit, so.
I'll fix it this.
Pretty much had to be a lull in the roof.
We'll fix it this.
Okay.
I get back to this.
All right, but anyway, we're still on.
I get to the roof this summer, but the damage, you know, everything has to get to now.
Okay. Okay, I just, again, we want to clean up the property, we want to make the property safe for tenants.
That's right.
And at this point, the roof is not a violation on the correct?
Is that part of this item?
On the current item?
It is, it is part of this item.
It is, okay.
So, okay, then I'm going to take back what I just said, and, but we can work this out afterward.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We also have a, for anyone here on these items, a process by which you can contact and request an appeal through our city manager for some mitigation of the fees. One of our other processes we allow for folks, we can get properties cleaned up. Again, that's our goal here. And that will move on to property two. Unless there's any other comment from council members?
Yeah, I'm trying to find the roof here. I'm looking at the corrective actions immediately required, and I see nothing about the roof. Your immediate attention is required. Your property is currently in eyesore of the surrounding community. Please remove all garbage, trash, and/or junk from your property. Ensure all vehicles are licensed, insured, and road-ready. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Is there a second?
Let me double check.
Am I, am I not seeing the? Same thing right there, and it's the original, I think.
Stand corrected. That's something we'll just talk about, and I'll talk with him about if I need to start a new case, or if he just wants to comply now.
Thank you.
Would you like us to still take action on this item, or if you have another direction? Go.
No, I think we can, we can try to work it out. That's, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Mayor, can I, I don't know if your procedure was to ask for other public comment after each item, or if you want, if you do that at the end, but I'll just remind you, if you wanted to do it after each item, to ask for any other public.
Right, right. Is there anyone else wishing to address council on this item, property number one? Seeing none, I'll close public comment on this, or do I need a motion to close? Okay, close public on, comment on this, and bring it back to council.
Thank you, sir, for working on your property and clearing it up for the community.
Oh, no problem, sir.
Okay, property number two?
Property number two, 1565438, 38th Avenue, owner Anthony and Jennifer Swett. Administrative penalty assessment $5,000. Accumulation and/or storage of gum, garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Condition recognized in law.
Constituting.
Sorry. Constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight. Violation of any provision of the Clear Lake Municipal Code. That was the deciding officer. Original pictures were taken on 4/21/2016. Current pictures were taken on 4/25/2017.
Very well, thank you, officer. Is the property owner here wishing to provide testimony on this item? Is anyone here wishing to provide testimony on the item, property two? Seeing none, I will close it. Bring it back to council. Councilmember Harris?
Just for clarity on this particular property, is this property adjacent to or connected to in any way a structure, or is this just a standalone property empty?
I believe that one time there was a structure and it burned down.
Okay.
And then that's what Lee Lambert had told me.
Okay, and if we can flip back to the 2016 pictures, and then back again to the 2017 pictures, it does look like literally anything has changed. Unless then?
Actually, the only thing that changes is a car was there.
The car arrived.
Okay, so it's actually.
Worse.
The blight has expanded in time frame. Okay. And this property owner has received notification?
Yes, I do have notes. I did talk to the property owner on June 15, 2016. He was really upset about the boat, and he said he would take care of it.
Was it his boat, or did someone drop it?
Someone dropped it. I did get a call a couple of months later saying they knew whose boat it was, and I called him, and he never called me back, so I was never able to find out. I talked to him again a month later, said he, I told him to at least clean the garbage out, made it a little better until we figured out how to get rid of the boat, but he still never did.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Councilmember Bennett, any comment?
As far as your other conversation with him, speaking about cleaning the boat out, didn't he say he was going to clean the boat out?
Yes, he did.
And then after that, you never waited to contact?
No, I tried to call him several times, never got, got a hold of him.
I just want to get a clarification on this. Thank you.
Did he change his statement to you when he agreed to clean out the boat, whether or not that was his property or not?
He said it was his property.
The boat and trailer?
No, not the boat and the trailer, just the property itself. He said someone dumped it there. He was upset, thinking that we should take care of it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I am curious, are there any markings on the boat to be able to identify who the actual owner is, like any kind of CF numbers?
I didn't see the one, the CF number. I didn't check for a license plate.
On the trailer?
Yes, I didn't.
Okay. Where are they currently?
I guess that another question would be if the, there, obviously, we don't see a license plate on the car, but there would be a VIN number. I'm wondering if there was any, any effort ran on the, trying to match the car to the.
At that point, we weren't running the plates when we, when I, I was still fairly new, and I wasn't running plates then. We just now started in the last, I was going to say four months.
Okay.
On the force inside.
Okay.
Councilmember Bennett?
I want to state, I have a lot of sympathy for property owners who have boats and trailers and RVs dumped on their property. However, that particular lot, we've had a lot of problems with in the past. Probably five or six years ago, we had to evade it. I don't know if it's the same owner or not. It took us, maybe Lieutenant Sully, remember, I think with, maybe a little over five or six years ago, it took us over a year to evade that property. And it looked like a junkyard. I mean, a really bad junkyard. I don't know if it's the same owners or not. But no effort has been made on part of this property owner to evade that situation. You know, if you own a piece of property, I don't know how long he's owned it, but.
It looks like since 1999.
So he was the owner when we abated that property before. Who was the code enforcement officer that passed away, the big guy? Yeah, Dunleavy was the one who abated it before, and that was a long process the city went through. So that property owner was the same owner at that time, and it took us well over a year for the city to evade that in the past. That property could have a fence around it to alleviate this problem. So he has done nothing, that property owner here, to alleviate the problem, so. And in this particular case, again, nothing has been done. He said he would clean this stuff out of the boat. Hasn't been done.
Thank you for that statement about putting a fence around your property. It's one way to secure your property, and that's, if you want to own a property, don't ask the city to take care of it. You need to be, take responsibility of your own property.
Thank you. Any other comments on property two? And I concur, I hate to see someone victimized, property owner victimized. But we need to keep our properties clean and good order for the safety of the community. Okay, item three?
We have a public comment.
We, we did public comment on two. Would you like me to reopen?
Please.
Would like to reopen?
This one here? Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Come on up.
Just a quick question on this. I did hear where the property owner lived, that owned this property. Is he local or is he out of town to me? You have the information?
Officer?
Yes, council?
He has a PO box out of Clear Lake?
Thank you.
Thank you. Close public comment again, and any other comments after that? Very well, I'd like to move on to property three.
Property number three, 1587129th Avenue, owner Kimball Poe. Administrative penalty assessment $2,500. Open enclosures, windows, or doors in vacant structure, defective, deteriorated, unsightly, or in disrepair, any building, wall, fence, driveway, et cetera. Accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight. Violation of any provision of the Clear Lake Municipal Code. That was the deciding officer. Original picture was taken on 7/12/2016. Current pictures were taken on 4/25/2017.
Explain the pictures.
So this is the first picture of the garage. You see the side of the house. See the other side of the house in the garage. This is inside the garage.
Thank you. Is Mr. Poe present, or anyone wishing to speak on this item? Property three?
And just for the record, this is the second time we assessed this property. It's already been assessed for $7,500 in 2015.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I thought it wasn't the first time we've seen that. I've gotten a lot of complaints about this property because of the wide opening area, and that there's a lot of squatters that end up taking shelter in that. And I recognize that it's remotely close to the adjacent house that's, I believe, east of that property. But I know that at one point, we were looking at the buildings across the street to see if maybe the firefighters can use it as a training, since this looks to be nothing but wood and lumber. Is that something that might be a possibility to simply reduce that to ashes rather than waiting for someone else to take care of it?
That's something I'd have to talk to Willis and Peter about.
Please.
If we need to authorize it. Yes, council?
Yeah, I would want to research that before taking such an action. That's a good one that I.
I don't think there's any hope for that house.
If you were able to maybe purchase the property and do that, that might be an option, but...
Well, with the approval of the property owner, of course.
Yes, that maybe.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to make that...
Sadly, this is not our first road deal. Councilmember Harris.
So, it does appear from the photographs that this was the house that it was underway. Was there a permit process opened up on this house?
I believe so. It was before my time.
Okay.
But I believe there were...
2018.
Yes, I talked to Lee Lambert. He said there was permits, someone started it and I think something happened with the funds and...
It would be, what I would find to be a little more interesting and maybe beneficial for our community if there was some sort of a tie-in from Habitat for Humanity that might be able to take this on and same thing, maybe even work with the property owner directly. And it might be a solution for him and a solution for them. There's already a structure and it would just be coming down to finishing the structure and then somebody would have a home and we'd have one less blighted property.
The problem is I've never been in contact with the property owner.
Okay, so, so then we haven't been in contact with the new owner?
No, I've not.
Is it bank owed?
Not, not according to parcel points.
Okay.
But we've made multiple attempts to get contacted and sent them notices and have been unsuccessful?
Yes.
Okay. I think that gives us an idea what to do. Any other comments by council? All right, let's move on.
I do have one quick question, since this is the second time we're assessing it. The first time was 7,500, this one's 10,000.
No, this one's 25,000.
I thought it was 10,000 for some reason.
25,000.
Where I saw the 10,000? Thank you for correcting me. It's a 50 by 100?
Yes.
Just sounds like we're assessing a higher of a possible value if the structure itself. I mean, it's been out in the weather for so long.
Yeah, I don't know. I wish it was on the list to be changed.
Any other comments on this particular property? All right, let's move on, sir.
Property number four, 15989, 32nd Avenue. Owner, James and Ashley Austin. Administrative penalty assessment, 10,000.
New batteries?
New person running. Just to make a quick note before I start this, I was not the siding officer in the beginning. Lee Lambert was, and when he was out on sick leave, I took over this case. Property number four, abandoned, destroyed or partially constructed building or structure. Open enclosures, windows or doors and vacant structure. Defective, deteriorated, unsightly or in disrespare. Any building, wall, fence, driveway, et cetera. Broken windows causing hazardous conditions or inviting trespassers and/or mischief. Accumulation and/or storage of junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight. Unsafe, hazardous, electrical wiring. Original pictures were taken on 10/19/2015. Current pictures were taken on floor 25, 2017.
Thank you. Are the owners of this property or someone responsible for the property here proper testimony? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. Council, you have any questions? None?
Any communication at all whatsoever?
No, sir.
I don't see any change, but...
Worse.
Yeah.
All right, let's move on to the next.
Property number five, 15770, 29th Avenue. Owner, Evelyn J. Estate, Whipple. Administrative penalty assessment, 5,000. Abandoned, destroyed or partially constructed building or structure. Open enclosures, windows or doors and vacant structure. Defective, deteriorated, unsightly or in disrespare. Any building, wall, fence, driveway, et cetera. Broken windows causing hazardous conditions or inviting trespassers and/or mischief. Condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight. General de, general de tap location or improper maintenance. Unsafe, hazardous, electrical wiring. Faulty weather protection, exterior walls, roof, foundations, floors, windows, doors, et cetera. Original pictures were taken on 9/21/2016. Current pictures were taken on floor 25, 2017.
Very well, thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Any, is the property owner or any witness present who would like to give testimony on this property? Please step forward. Seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back. Any questions from council members on this particular property? Seeing none, sir, please move ahead.
Property number six, 16133, 28th Avenue. Owner, John Kunos. Administrative penalty assessment, 5,000. Abandoned structure or partially constructed building or structure. Open enclosures, windows or doors and vacant structure. Accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Injuries to health, offensive senses of struck, free use, enjoyment of property. Violation of any provision of the Clear Lake Municipal Code. Accumulation of weeds, vegetation, junk, debris, garbage, stagnant water, combustible materials, et cetera, creating fire health and/or safety hazard. Original pictures were taken on 9/1/2015. This is the front of the house. And I was not the siding officer. This is some, another case that I took over. These current pictures were taken on floor 25, 2017. Now, this looks okay. This is the side of the garage. This is the other side. This is the back of the house.
This is property seven, is that correct?
Six.
Six. Anyone here wishing to discuss this property or provide testimony? Please step forward.
The address you just showed back before, 160327th Avenue, doesn't match the picture.
That's because we haven't gotten to the 27th Avenue one yet.
I'm sorry, guys.
It's next.
I apologize.
That's okay, we're getting there though. We're getting closer.
One note, I did talk to the neighbor who said her boyfriend owned the house and he lost it five years ago. I didn't talk to John himself, but his girlfriend.
No response to mail that sent, no response to postings?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Does it, just from the pictures, it kind of appears that with the ladder leaning out there and that sort of thing, I would imagine an abandoned house, that sort of thing running away pretty quickly. So, there's somebody living in there?
No, not that I've seen.
Okay. Any other questions? Let's move on.
Property number seven, 16303, 27th Avenue. Owner, William Baldwin. Administrative penalty assessment, 7,500. Open enclosures, windows or doors and vacant structure. Defective, deteriorated, unsightly or in disrespare. Any building, wall, fence, driveway, et cetera. Broken windows causing hazardous conditions or inviting trespassers and/or mischief. Accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Condition recognized in law constituting a public nuisance and/or visual blight. Lack of or improper water closet, lavatory, bathtub, shower. Lack of hot and cold running water. Faulty weather protection, exterior walls, roof, foundation, floors, windows, doors, et cetera. Accumulation of weeds, vegetation, junk, debris, garbage, stagnant water, combustible materials, et cetera, creating a fire, health and/or safety hazard. Lee Lambert was the original siding officer and then I took over the case. Original pictures were taken on approximately 7/29/2015. This is a picture of where the power meter had been pulled. Current pictures were taken on floor 25, 2017.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak to us about item property seven? Thank you, sir. Come on up.
I'm sorry, I'm overly excited.
You are excited.
I don't know your procedures.
That's okay.
I'm just taking pictures and I have a lovely property next door. I wish you'd taken pictures of it because...
Let's talk about this one.
Well, I've been at 16333 for 16 years. The original owner, 12 years ago, William Baldwin, was driven away by ambulance and died at the hospital. And for the five years after, he had two renters living there. They died five years ago, several years ago, and it's been squatters ever since. And I was a jail nurse medic in Sonoma County and I'm familiar with methamphetamine being cooked or being used. And these people were cooking methamphetamine all the time. But my question is, I've been to the county and city backing for it so many times and Child Protective Services in the Squatter Center, the answer was go to the owner. And I explained, I said, the owner died and now the renters have died. So, what I did, I contacted, bless her heart, she's wonderful, Kathy Freo is a civilian coroner here in Lake County.
She is wonderful.
And she, she looked around and she found out he died at Sonoma Hospital in Napa. And may I approach the bench and just...
Write it to the officer.
But anyway, that, that...
We're not nearly as cool as a judge. We try.
But I don't want him here in front of the judge anymore.
Yeah, well, I...
But that verifies, I mean, the death certificate, it wasn't a long ago, but it verifies his death. So, my question is, what is the policy when you have an abandoned property and the owner's been dead for 12 years? There is nobody to collect, I believe it's 7,500 dollars right now. And the only way you're going to get that is to get his cash get, I mean, he's dead.
We'd attach it to the property. Hopefully, some wise person looking for a fixer-upper would be in there.
Probably one in there somewhere, but the point is, he's dead. So, what, what is the Lake County or City of Clear Lake Code enforcement procedure when the owner's dead?
Just go back now.
That's where I'm going there.
Well, in the situation where you have a property where the owner is deceased, the legal owner of the property would be whoever that person's heirs are, if there are any. Right now, the title of the property is still in the name of the deceased person. So, in theory, the taxes have not been paid for a number of years. So, the property is likely in a tax-defalted status at the county. In theory, what should happen is that the county would sell that property at a tax default sale. If the county were selling properties at a tax default sale and someone would acquire it and whatever proceeds were received on the sale of the tax default would go first to pay taxes, then, and then anything else.
It's a logic, I mean, but I...
It's probably wisely so. So, at this point, it's a bit of a quandary for the city because there is no legal owner. There is a technical process where the city can acquire title to the property. However, what we would have to do is to pay off the property taxes. Keep in mind that out of, most of the property taxes that are paid are not paid to the city. Most of them go to other taxing agencies like the county. So, there's really no benefit for the city to incur all of this cost to acquire the property. So, it's, it's a very frustrating situation for the city at this point to, to deal with, with properties like this. So, until the city and the county come to a relative meeting of the minds regarding foreclosing on tax-defalted properties, it's going to be a fairly frustrating...
You probably don't have a date and time when you're going to come together or anything. My other question was, the both renters, William and, I mean, Cleveland and Calvin, excuse me, the gentleman did have a couple of nephews or grandchildren in Oakland, but they wanted nothing to do with property. And when I did check, I had legal help. I was asking and they said they didn't have to accept the property.
We come across that situation very frequently in this area because, because the value of the property, the land itself is, doesn't have a lot of value. So, if the structure that's on it doesn't have much value, then it's likely that whoever the potential heirs are are not going to, you know, poke at the hornet's nest and try and do anything with the property because then they're going to end up getting stuck with the tax.
So, was that even a moral dilemma?
It's not a moral dilemma, it's more a legal dilemma. It's a legal dilemma and it's frustrating to a lot of people, you and us included.
Well, thank you very much, very much.
Thank you, sir, for bringing that information forward.
Sir, would you like to dispatch?
Oh, yes, I would, just in case I can think of something else. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this, on this item? Council members, any question? Mr. Harris?
No.
No question. Anyone else? Let's move on to the next, shall we?
Property number eight, 16092, 10th Avenue. Owner, Leonardo Aguilar. Administrative penalty assessment, 2,500. Accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Violation of any provision of the Clear Lake Municipal Code. Any use of property that violates federal, state or local law, rule or regulation. That was the siding officer. Original pictures were taken on March 9, 2016. This is a picture of a fence that's about eight or nine feet tall with tarps and reed fencing. There was an inoperable vehicle there. Current pictures were taken on floor 25, 2017. Fence is still up. Fence is still up. But the truck is gone.
Can you go back to the first picture?
Yes, sir.
Or the first. If you come back. Just want to make sure we've got the note correct. Is it moving back?
You want to go back?
Yes, please, to the first slide. One more. Is that thing correct? I think we got an extra zero. Okay. It's not twenty-five thousand, twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-five hundred.
Just for clarity, okay, because that's a big difference. All right, is there anyone here to talk about this property? Please come forward. Or offer testimony, seeing that I'll bring it back to council. Any questions, gentlemen? Want to ask one? Nope? Let's move on.
This is property number nine, three nine two three Oak Avenue. Owner, Thomas Gallagher. Administrator penalty assessment five thousand.
Mr. Mayor, this property has been postponed to the second meeting in May. The owner of the property contacted me regarding, he was in the Arizona, was not able to make it back for this hearing. Called me, requesting an extension of time to the second meeting in May. I granted that extension to him, so I would ask that the council just defer this hearing to the May twenty-fifth? May twenty-fifth? Thank you, sir.
Next.
Property number ten, one six one eight four thirteenth Avenue. Owner, Harold Libero. Administrator penalty assessment five thousand. And for the record, I was not the original siding officer, I believe it was Rebecca Sanders. Defective, deteriorated, unsightly, or in disrepair of any building, wall, fence, driveway, et cetera. Accumulation and/or storage of garbage, junk, appliances, inoperable vehicles, et cetera. Boxes, lumber, trash, dirt, et cetera, stores invisible from street and/or nearby properties. Violation of any provision of the Clearly Municipal Code. Original pictures were taken on twelve sixteen, two thousand fifteen. Current pictures were taken on four twenty-five, two thousand seventeen. This is a truck in the backyard.
All right, thank you. Anyone here for this last property, offer testimony or give a statement, council will consider. If they're being done, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council for action. For further deliberation. Any other questions of staff? Anybody got a motion?
Recommended action, motion to adopt resolution number two zero one seven dash two three and reapply title.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
I have a question about the first gentleman. Just going back, we decided that you would be working with him to ensure that the property gets completed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're looking at two through ten and also skipping number nine?
Sounds right.
Could you make a note that you're continuing item number one to May twenty-fifth so that you don't have to renotice the public hearing?
We can.
We also need to make a note, of course, on number eight to modify the number written as you stated.
Yeah, to correct the fine amount to twenty-five hundred.
If, Mr. Mayor, but I may make a suggestion, if it's the intent of the council to allow the person on the first item to correct his property and we're already continuing item number eight to the May twenty-fifth meeting, may I suggest you just defer action on item one and item eight to the May twenty-fifth meeting and approve the notice?
I appreciate that suggestion.
I'm sorry, it's item one and item nine.
I will go ahead and attempt to make a motion on this then. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number two zero one seven dash two three confirming the assessments. Totalling the amount of, you know, it wouldn't be totaling the amount. Moving items number one and number nine to the, to be continued on May twenty-fifth. And then we make a correction on item eight to the twenty-five hundred dollar fine, just the way it's written.
It's correct in the resolution, actually.
Okay, great. And then the... So it'll be confirming the special assessments consisting of administrative penalties for the failure to evade public notices in the above lien against real properties in accordance with sections one dash five, one dash nine, ten dash one point six, ten dash one point seven, ten dash one point nine, ten dash one point one two, ten dash two point two B, ten dash two point four, ten dash two point five, ten dash two point six, ten dash two point seven, ten dash two point eight, ten dash three point one, ten dash three point three, ten dash five, and ten dash five point six of the City of Clearly Municipal Code.
We can afford to have a second.
A second?
I have a motion in the second, Vice Mayor. Broke all vote, please.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Firdah?
Aye.
Moving on to item eleven, which is continued from the April thirteenth public hearing, to adopt certain findings and approve energy service contract for energy-related improvements to the city facilities with Aircon Energy Inc. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we're teeing up a new presentation, but I'll introduce Chris Becknell, our finance director on this one, as well as representatives from Mayor's office.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This is the, basically the third time this item has come before you. We're getting very close to the end here. So the first time it came before you was in mid-two thousand sixteen when Aircon Energy, uh, Aircon Energy had performed a preliminary audit of the facilities and determined that some savings were available. In September of two thousand, excuse me, in October thirteenth of two thousand sixteen, you entered into a letter of intent, authorized a letter of intent with Aircon Energy to do an investment-grade audit to confirm the findings that their preliminary audit had done. They had completed that process. We are now at the point where we're ready to get into the contract and financing phase of this. So before going further, what I'd like to do is to introduce Andy Roth and his team to just basically give a short description of the findings and then we'll talk about what the steps are that we're going to ask you to complete tonight. There are two hearings, public hearings tonight. This is the first of two hearings. This is dealing with adopting or approving energy findings and the contract. The second is to authorize management to move forward with obtaining the financing for the project. So, Andy?
Good evening, Chris Becknell.
Good evening, sir.
Honorable Mayor, council members and city staff. Hello, Andy Roth, Director of Energy Services with Aircon Energy. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. As Chris said, we're here to report out on our final recommendations from a process we refer to as investment-grade audit. We spent considerable time, the engineers did, looking over all your facilities and structures, and we have sat down with staff, reviewed those findings, and that's what you're going to see tonight. Right there. What did I do wrong? Oh, that's a long... Wow, I, sir, but you have this in your packet. We looked at, this, the buildings aren't all that dissimilar to what we, I think, looked at the first time. We looked at City Hall Police Station. You're going to see consistent lighting upgrades in almost all of these as LEDs have become more cost-effective, payback, et cetera. They're just natural to move from TH down into the LED fixtures. Spent a little bit of time talking about, though, the police station or the, this building in general from a HVAC standpoint. They have eleven units up on the roof. One of them is actually fairly new, does not need to be replaced. You have ten others, we could say, gee, let's replace ten, you don't need ten. We came back, we've come back with our recommendations and said you need six. Reason for that is, is that you have major comfort issues, you probably wear that in this building, we certainly heard it when we went around here. Redo the duct system. Make the runs a little shorter, you don't need bigger units. Put thermostats in locations that are a little bit more proactive toward the units are. And then also supply and returns. We have some areas, particularly over next door here, where you've got supplies and returns that are not necessarily the same rooms, causes all sorts of havoc. There's also in here a, this was a request that we received as we went around and we were talking to people in the dispatch area, comfort issues significantly. So looking at upgrading a unit from two and a half ton to a four ton. Not necessarily more energy efficient, but it was requested from a comfort standpoint to address that. And finally, there's a couple of small units, smaller items here, but this, this newsroom ductless split, that was something that's identified to us through the process, that it's a major comfort issue. This room, I believe, that's over here. The bottom there, park, there's lighting there. And for Redbud Park, Community Center, more lighting. You have some very, very old heating units there. I think we talked about the ceiling fan last time here, I believe Ms. Overton, right? Yes, yeah, she was very, very clear to us that that was an issue. We need to somehow make the air a little more comfortable from a resident's standpoint. And also looking at replacements from other key products there. The bottom line is, we're looking at about eight hundred thousand dollars in expenditure, which includes solar, and I'm going to have Brian talk about that here in a moment. We're looking at sixty-four thousand dollars in savings overall, of which thirty-four come from solar, that's to offset the P G D bills, some of which you pay today, of course, or if not, all your electricity, I should say. And you've got a payback term of eleven point eight years. But I think what I'd like to do is, this hundred and twenty-four kilowatt solar panel system, I have Brian from Alternative Energy Systems, who is a SunPower partner, talk to you a little bit about that. Go, Brian.
Yeah, that's just a point of further, you don't have to do anything. It's clear. Okay. Thank you. So we initially addressed looking at, or evaluating all the different meters throughout the city. And initially, we were looking at a program, it was RES B C T, which we found to be quite prohibited with the utility. So the next step was looking at the alternative to individual sites of having solar around the city and addressing those meters. And we grabbed the, or finalized on the two lowest standing group ones where the majority of your electric costs were going. Which actually included this building here in the police department, and then also the community center, which I think is now the senior...
Community center.
Senior, okay.
What's the senior, you're not the community center?
Okay, sorry, I left that backwards here. So after evaluating those, we designed group-mounted projects and were proposing to put, I believe it's seventy-three kilowatts, seventy-three point five here on top of this building. And then there would be another fifty point five over at the community center over there. Both projects have been designed to produce nearly a hundred percent of all your kilowatt hours. We're doing our best to attempt to mitigate all your kilowatt hour costs with these. We were also proposing to transition the rate schedule here from an A-ten to an A-six rate schedule, which is, basically you're getting charged two different ways for energy here. And solar only offsets kilowatt hours, but it does not offset your demand costs with an A-ten rate. So by switching to an A-six rate, your bills actually would be much higher if you didn't have solar. But now that we're going to offset all your kilowatt hour costs, we're primarily wiping everything down to just your meter costs here. I believe the offset for this building, the annual offset was about twenty-three thousand five hundred. The other building was just over sixteen thousand. And that, when we transition to that A-six rate, that's basically the full twenty-three five that we're looking at for this building here. There would be about a hundred and sixty-nine dollars up here. We would be working with the roofer to secure the root fasteners and penetrations there. That will be part of our warranty with this project. AES, whenever we're using our SunPower equipment, we warranty all of our workmanship, including the root penetrations for a twenty-year term. And it'd be the same over at the community center there. It's also, that's a non-penetrating fastener that we would use over there. Any questions or things that were about these solar projects that I can help address while I'm up here?
If I can just add to this, we looked at a couple of different alternatives as well. Because we have the property out at Oculine Canyon, that was our original idea, that we were going to place all the solar panels out there. That came back as being a lot more expensive. So then we looked at another alternative, which was putting in carports at the...
District Center?
Community Center. And then here at City Hall, that also was more expensive than this. This was the most efficient, least expensive alternative.
I think the carports for the community center were about seventy thousand dollars more, if I recall. Or maybe that was in combination, it was significant money.
Trying to always be as cost-effective as we can. Some entities really like carports as well for, not only for shape of their vehicles, also putting lights in there for security and things that people are walking out of their vehicles during the nighttime. But just working with Greg and Doug and Chris, we finally decided on looking at the roof-mounted options that seem to be the most logical there.
One of the goals very clearly set by the city of the staff was, this was to be a...
Can you speak in the light?
This project was attracted to the city, the primary goal, I should say, from the city's standpoint, was no cash out. So we looked at, from a cash flow standpoint, if you take the total of the projects, both the solar and the energy efficiency, it's just over eight hundred and eight thousand dollars. And we have, we think are reflective of today's interest rates in the marketplace, taking a look at one hundred percent financing those, E stands for energy efficiency. That's a payment over, in this case, a seventeen-year term. Creds are the pre-renewable energy bonds, I think we talked about earlier, that's federal government subsidization program, I believe, administered by ARS. The money is quickly going away. It's, we don't see with the current administration in Washington, that'll likely be renewed. So when it's gone, it will be gone, and that offsets the interest rates on the solar project. Anyway, the key point is, is that, you know, we still see this as a winner project, that it is, there's no cash out, but at the end of the year, you're still cash positive. And I think with that, I'll turn it back to Chris because I think this is really kind of where we're at from where, determining where the city wishes to go.
Correct. So the first part of this is, this is a continued public hearing. So the first part of this and this hearing, and it's really two at the same time, is to accept the findings of the energy audit and approve the proposed contracts with Aircon Energy and Alternative Energy. Approve those contracts, subject to the approval and the completion of the financing... And I'll be happy to, to answer any further questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions from council members? Councilmember Harris?
I just have a couple of, a couple of questions to cover with you. I'll just break them up into pieces, if that's all right. The orientation of the panels that are going to be located on the roof, is there going to be a tilt mount system?
Well, with Brian, Chris specifically.
Yes, for this building, we'll be utilizing SunPower as a helix system. It's a proprietary setup, but it is a tilt up, about 10-degree tilt. Majority of the panels would be facing south over here. Another portion would be above the dome up here, and they're pointing southwest on the...
So they won't be tracking?
No.
They'll be fixed?
No.
Okay. And then are those going to be string or microinverter solar arrays?
With the three phase, we're proposing to do string inverters on these.
Okay. With the string inverter scenario, is there going to be a possibility for real-time monitoring of the panels? So if we had an issue with, let's say we lost a panel, are we going to have a way of identifying the panel that's lost and be able to address that issue through a warranty perspective, so we're not losing energy production?
Yes. We will be fully monitoring the system. It's a, you can track it as well, but that's something that our service department does. It isn't down to a module level monitoring. It will be on a stream level.
Because it's strings?
Correct.
Okay. Was there any perspective, was there any look taken at the microinverter scenario for the purpose of, or the benefit of ongoing management? Or was that not, not even looked into?
Well, generally, microinverters, we typically use those mainly on residential applications.
Just a smaller application?
Right.
Right.
Commercial, we typically use string inverters for three days.
Just because of the size of the array? It's enormous.
And cost effectiveness.
And what is the, what is the warranty on the panels?
It's 25 years for both workmanship and production.
Okay. And then, I know the shade structure was, was shot down because of the additional cost that's involved in it. But I guess the only thing that I would say about that is that, obviously, there's an additional cost, but as we can see here from the perspectives, there, there's a significant savings over time. And obviously, obtaining a shade structure out of the program is, is kind of nice just by itself. So I'm not totally, I, I, I kind of think for the cost of the additional thing, it might be at least worth the thought. But I don't, I don't know how much we'd be willing to spend on that, but I just think that it would be sure nice to incorporate something like that that benefits us in a multifaceted way, not just from a solar production perspective, but also giving us something we don't have currently, which is a shade structure for parking. Was there any, is there anything for a large-scale solar array for a municipality or government entity like this, that we receive some sort of benefit from the, on a federal level, from a tax perspective, or anything like that?
My understanding is, this is a nonprofit type of scenario where we were...
Right.
Getting taxes in.
The credits is only available to...
That's, that's, that's the benefit, is the credit. That's what I, that's what I figured. I just wanted to verify that that's how that works. I'm just curious, because I know some of these larger scale projects have some sort of benefits, and I was just wondering about that. And then the, I know I had brought it before, and I thought it would be interesting for consideration, since we're undertaking such a large project here, to at least get some consideration to the idea of some vehicles charging stations. And that would be a sub-issue, but it might be something that would be interesting to tie into this sort of a project, just because we're headed in that direction. It would be nice at that time to start, if we're going green, I think the idea is, is useful to start headed in that direction and incorporate that in some of our thoughts. The last thing I would say is, what I do know that on this particular facility, you're looking at replacing the multiple package units with a, with much larger zoned, I assume, gas package units, but we're going to be having the solar array. Was there any consideration taken into the concept of going for heat pumps in the place of the gas electric units, and just increasing the array so that we can offset the energy costs?
Yes, yeah. We took a look at that, Chris, remember? We did quite a number of different analyses. Doug, can't think, remember your, his last name?
Aaron.
Oh, sorry. Your, oh, your source guy, Doug.
Doug Aaron.
Yeah. He was a real big proponent of having a look at that, and it just doesn't... I think, Brian, wasn't there also a space issue in this building? The number of panels that were going to be to offset, that were going to be required to run?
We couldn't even offset.
Yeah, we, it wasn't physically possible.
And I thought that very well may be the case. I, I figured you guys probably took a hard look at that. I just want to make sure that it's clear that the public knows that all of the avenues were addressed, because I do see the obvious benefit to gas-electric. It has a very quick recovery as well. We do get pretty cold here. You know, below 40 degrees, we're not getting a ton of benefit from a heat pump. And a gas-electric, it gives us that recovery. So in a large facility like this, that's pretty important. So I do appreciate all of your answers. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I have a question about the shade structure that you looked into. Can you describe what it would have looked like and what, why that cost would have been? Just to see what kind of different types of parking shade structures are available?
Yeah, there's certainly a variety of them. I had proposed to use the most cost-effective one, which is basically a very single post design. It would have spanned that center aisle up here in the parking area. It actually would have filled up just about that entire center aisle there, that on either side of the parking spaces there. It would require, I think there was a light post or flagpole out there that you removed. But it certainly...
Well, green, too. I believe there were, weren't, are there trees out there?
Yes.
So there was an issue with that as well. Not at the cost, but I think, wasn't there, there's something that those have to be there for some reason, right? Or desired to be.
That, that, that part I don't remember, Doug.
Because I'm thinking of the senior center. One of the highlights of our senior center is for seniors to go there during lunch, during the summertime, even going into fall, it gets really warm out there. And if there was a possibility of just that area, rather than every single facility having a shade structure, I'd love to see what that would look like and what the cost would be. Because yes, there is some cost savings to doing that, and if we can also create a more comfortable and inviting venue to our community center, then I think that would be a great way to do it.
And just to add to that, we have, we actually had some drawings that we showed to staff of where structure would go, and that's where we came up with the number, I want to say off the top of my head, it was like 70,000 or something like that, too.
And is that for multiple facilities, or was that solar?
That was at the community center. That was over there. We looked at doing that, and, you know, again, we came back to this scenario saying, you know, if the goal is no cash out...
No cash out.
We wanted to try to get this either neutral, if not positive. That kind of fought us against it the other way. But certainly, it's something that we can address.
Because we would have money out for, if we wanted the parking structure.
Or make a decision to take it from something else. Okay. Councilmember Harris?
So the, it's one more thing. The, the city of Clear Lake's electrical consumption is being significantly augmented from the solar array that we're proposing here, and the changes, obviously, but we're, we're not net zero. It's just being augmented, is that the case?
Well, for each of the meters that we have here, currently, right now, here at the, the police, the police department and the city hall, we're offsetting about 73,000 kilowatt hours, pardon me, 109,875 kilowatt hours. The system's going to produce all of that except for 32. Basically, reducing the bill down to just the meter costs on it. And the new, well, not new, but the not bypassable charges, the PGE will not allow us to offset any longer these days. But basically, we're reducing your bill from 23,491, and it's, the new annual bill based on current rates would be 1,0775. The next system over at the community center, annual usage was 80,418. The system was designed to produce 8,301, so you're still just about 100% on the offset over there. That one's already on an A1 rate, so we wouldn't want to change that at all. It's a very good friendly one with solar. But the annual bill currently on, based on March 1st rates, was 17,466. And the new annual bill after that project's installed is estimated to be 1,440.
So a very significant augmentation of the bill, so it's been very close to net zero at that point.
It's about as much as I could, I could get there.
Right, as much as you can find.
There's a, there are certain amounts of, utility won't let us offset the meter costs associated. Everybody pays those, whether you have solar or not. That's just one thing, they always charge you for, on a monthly basis there. Non-bypassable charges can't offset those either. Those are meant for public purpose programs, nuclear decommissioning. Those are costs that are kind of wrapped up into kilowatt hour costs. But they, they just won't let us offset those these days. They're trying to protect the infrastructure in those programs, so that's...
So you've shaved just about everything you can shave?
Just about everything that we could there.
Okay. And then, I guess for the future, though, you know, I'm not really interested so much in what we're talking about out here. I'm not really so much interested in this area out here, but just like Council or Vice Mayor Sabatier was saying, over at the community center, I think would be an advantageous place to have that sort of shade structure. And then also, as we expand upon our parks renovation, I think that would be also a really nice place possibly to incorporate something into the shade structures of areas where families could gather and that sort of thing. Instead of just having a roofed building, for example, we could have a roof that has purpose. So thank you for all of your efforts on this.
Need any comment or question? I'd like to open this for public comment. You guys can stick around this for a little bit, see if anybody has questions. You can form an orderly line to the left, that would be beneficial. I'm not talking to you, sir, I'm just having a... I'll be sitting down quietly, bring you back to council for action. Councilmember Harris? Who pans up?
I just left it up, I'm so sorry.
Any other deliberation? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2017-21, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Clear Lake, adopting findings regarding energy-related improvements to city facilities and authorizing and approving an energy service contract relating to such improvements with Aircon Energy, Inc., and Alternative Energy Systems, Inc.
Have a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second?
Before you do, I'll go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I had a question, I just completely forgot. When I invite PG&E to come to my house and do a free review of my energy efficiency, they look at my windows, they look at my doors to make sure everything is sealed, is there any other, I saw all the LEDs and the lights, and then the energy efficiency of our devices that we're using, our equipment, is there anything else that you notice in the buildings that could be done that can also lower the need of energy?
I, the answer is yes, there are some other things, and you hit on some of the doors and windows, but we tend to focus on those things where we could really quantify energy savings without coming to you and say, it would be a 75-year payback on window seal, something of that nature. We could come back and give you some more recommendations along those lines. This deals with the primary use. This is where we can see the biggest return on your expenditures.
Okay. Just thought I would ask. We can continue on with the motion.
Thank you, sir, we have a motion on the floor.
We have a second.
And we have the second as well. Senator, do you mind taking a whole call vote?
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Burdon?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a second now, too?
Yeah, want to leave that one up, because, yeah, you can just hang around, put your shirts.
All right. So moving on to item 12, continued from the April 13 meeting as well, a public hearing to adopt certain findings and approving finance terms for related loan documents to fund energy-related improvements at the city facilities. Mr. Beckhno?
Yes, please.
Mr. Beckhno?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. This is the second of two public hearings this evening. This deals with the financing of the energy-related improvements that you just talked about. So having accepted the findings and decided what it is that we're going to do, now we have to actually pay for it. And there are really two elements to the financing package. And we are in the process, it takes a little while to put all of that together. So what the request of the council is tonight, is to authorize management to go out and pursue financing for this project. There are two legs to the financing. The total, the total cost of the project is about $808,000. It's really broken into two parts. Half of it is your energy efficiency, that's basically the equipment. And then the other half of it is the solar portion of that. The solar portion of that, we expect to be financed through the CREBS bonds. The CREBS application has basically been completed. It will be signed, and pending your approval of this resolution tonight, will be sent to the IRS tomorrow, under, over the city manager's signature. The other portion of the financing is a little bit more complicated. It's basically a lease-back arrangement on the equipment financed through, through one of the buildings, and that's basically going to be probably the community center. Gil Morton, who was originally involved in the financing of the community, of what was then the senior center, now the community center a number of years ago, is involved in this transaction again, and it's a, it's a lease-back transaction. We are in the process of putting that together. The estimates that you see up on the screen estimate that the energy-efficient portion of that would be at a rate of about 3.5%, and the CREBS bonds at about 1.2%, and it's financed over a period of 17 years. So we're asking that you authorize management to go out and pursue that package. The package, when it's completed, must come back to the council for approval. I will tell you that your authorization tonight will allow us to pursue that. This whole deal must go forward as a package of both items. The contract, if we don't have the financing, doesn't go forward. If we don't have the contract, obviously, we don't need the financing. So both of these must go together. So, so the way the resolution is written, and you were given the resolution this evening, basically, what we're saying is, the absolute minimum, it must be a cash flow positive project. So if you look at the, the schedule up there, you can see, in the first year, it's almost $11,000 positive cash flow, and it increases over the years. At the end of 25 years, it's almost 1.1 million positive cash flow. The absolute minimum on this, and I was very clear with everyone from the beginning, this is a no cash out of the city's pocket deal, even though we needed to make sure that we solve our, our equipment problems. But what we really want to do is, we want to make sure that the financing that we have is as close as possible to the numbers reflected up there. And we were having, we had a conference call today, and we're discussing the relative rates, and we believe that those numbers are probably fairly close to what we'll, what we'll get. So we're just asking for your authorization from management to pursue that, and to bring back to you a completed financing package, in which case, everything will then go forward. And I'll already have any answering questions.
Any questions from council members, Vice Mayor?
Yes. So I love the idea of saving any money. And so going green seems like the right thing to do. My question is, what is our timeline that we might be looking at, at getting all of these energy-saving projects completed, so we can actually, the, the solar panels, obviously, we're not doing, the rest, are we paying Aircon for this, or are we doing the other LED changes ourselves?
Go ahead.
Thank you, gentlemen, please.
I'm Jeff Wagner with, with Aircon Energy. So the, the question is, how the, the payment will be set up as far as savings accrual versus when you start making payments on the... when you start making payments on the equipment?
No, it's more of, because the equipment on the solar panels, I get that we ask you guys to set it up for us, you guys set it up for us. Uh, we're, we, we've already discussed that part, but the rest of all the work done to the police departments, our, uh, our offices here, uh, the changes done to the senior centers, is that going to go through you guys as well, or is that going to be, okay?
All work performed under the contract is, is done at a fixed price turnkey by Aircon.
I just wanted to...
Either our partners.
Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure that we were going to start saving, our maximum saving right away, rather than having to wait to be able to get those projects completed, because we have so many other projects onboard, that I was a, a little worried about where it fit within our strategical plan.
Correct. And your payments on your, your loans effectively won't begin until six months into the, the project, so the savings will start accruing when it's time to, to make your payments. Uh, so the construction period, you know, won't count against that, that ticking clock.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Good answer. Anyone else? Saying none, I'll open it for public comment, anyone wishing to address council or have questions from our, uh, presenters, please step forward. Saying none, I'll close. Bring you back for deliberation, I'm sorry.
So you've just asked for public comment?
I did.
While we were asking if you had done it, so, thank you.
Yeah, I, I was just...
I'm trying to learn the process.
Public hearing was the same as public comment.
Yeah.
Public hearing, thank you. Saying none, I'll close, public comment, public hearing. Uh, do we need a motion for that? Mr. Mayor? No? Councilmember Bennett?
I would move that we adopt Resolution Number 2017-22, uh, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Clearlake, directing management of the City of Clearlake to pursue financing for energy-related improvements to city facilities.
Thank you, sir, do you have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second by the Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
And Mayor Firda?
Aye.
And with that, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back to your business.
Thank you for your patience, officer.
All right. We are reconvened, moving on to business. Item 13, consideration of approval of a sole service purchase of 18 mobile data computers, vehicle mounts, and RIM software. This would be Resolution 2017-19, Resolution of the City Council authorizing the police department to purchase 18 mobile data computers, MDS, uh, sorry, MDCs, get these bad boys on. MDC vehicle mounts and RIM software. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mayor. There we go. All right. In 2013, the Clearlake Police Department, along with the Lakeport Police Department, received an AB 109 grant, which was realignment, and received that grant each year since. Previous expenditures have included special enforcement operations, a prisoner transport van, and an employee entrance door hallway into the police department. The grant funding ended during the 1617 fiscal year, and all unspent funds were released and split between the Lakeport Police Department and the Clearlake Police Department. So the total funds available that we have now in our AB 109 account is $82,467. Mobile data computers, MDCs, are comprised of a monitor, a CPU, and a keyboard. The MDCs are designed to withstand extreme environmental conditions, such as heat, cold, vibration, and shock, uh, so they're designed to be a lot more sturdy than your normal computer. They allow patrol officers to communicate with dispatch and provide other vital information to the officers, such as, uh, information regarding pending warrants and criminal history. It gives them a connection to criminal databases, and allows them to recognize license plates for vehicles that are wanted or associated with unrest warrant. Some of the specifications, uh, that we have for these are that, we are looking at refurbished Panasonic ToughBook 53s versus brand-new, which is a substantial cost savings. They have 14-inch LED displays, they use the Intel Core i5, um, blah blah, with touchscreens, uh, they use Windows 10 Professional 64-bit, 16GB of RAM, 256GB solid-state drive, they have an extended warranty, and they can come with Microsoft Office. So the current situation, staff has conducted an extensive research for similar systems. The www.toughruggedlaptops.com was identified as the only company that met these system requirements. The total cost, uh, for the Panasonic, 18 Panasonic ToughBooks themselves was $27,557. There, additionally, there's sales tax and shipping. We also have to purchase the records information system software, or RIMs, software, for approximately $35,000. There is additional cost for the vehicle mounts of approximately $9,800, so the total cost is approximately $75,000 for the entire system. This is, uh, an important purchase for us, because it does help us to implement our strategic plan. Um, this purchase helps the city to implement goal number two of the strategic plan, which should make Clearlake a statistically safer city. This helps by providing those officers with that direct access to the vital information in the field, and by allowing officers to complete their reports in the field. So our recommendation is to, by motion, adopt Resolution Number 2017-19, authorizing the purchase of 18 mobile data computers, vehicle mounts, and software. And I, let me toss the ball over to Lieutenant Selly, just to offer a little bit more information.
Thank you, sir. Lieutenant?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, thank you for hearing this tonight. Um, this is something that I believe that we've needed for a long, long time. This will help make our officers safer, because it will provide them information out in the field. Um, and I just want to take a moment and thank Sergeant Lenz and Sergeant Hobbs, uh, for doing the research on the, I, I'm not always a, an individual that, uh, wants to admit his limitations, however, this is one item that, uh, that is beyond my, my capacity as far as knowing much about the computer systems. So, um, I asked Sergeant Hobbs, uh, to look into this matter, and which he did. Um, both sergeants did, uh, did extensive research on this, and we believe this is going to fit our needs, um, as well as allow for expansion on, uh, on these programs. So, uh, if you have any questions, I would love to turn it over to the two sergeants, and I just want to thank them for being here and taking away time from their families to, uh, help, uh, help with this situation.
Thank you, Lieutenant, thank you, officers. I did some of this research myself one time, and, uh, I appreciate your debt, it looks really good, the ToughBooks worth about the best component out there to use, uh, and it is a much necessary, much-needed, uh, tool for you. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, we, um, as I've, I've written along multiple times, and I've actually had some conversations with our, um, acting chief, and I would say that this is an absolutely necessity for you guys to have this kind of technology in your vehicles. Um, the one thing that I was going to bring up about this is that, um, there's going to be, I'm making an assumption that these things are going to require a dedicated 4GLTE data service for each, for each unit, is that going to be the case, or they have, uh, constantly connected to the internet?
Yes.
Okay, so, did we take those costs into consideration as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then, uh, secondly to that, the other thing that I would, I would say is, if there's a way to, to, uh, if there is a way to incorporate any kind of, um, voice-over IP communication that could be directly funneled through, um, through those units, because I know that there is, um, a real disparity with radio communications out in the field, and if that can be a secondary line of defense, so we can have, uh, always-on voice-over IP communications with the, um, dispatch center utilizing technology that we're putting in place, I, I just think that would be a real serious benefit. Has there been any research into that, so that we can incorporate that into the scenario as well?
There has not been any research into that. Yes, it potentially could be something that could be done, however, we did, we did not look into that. And in regards to the internet access, basically, the option we went with was due to limitations on the cellular service, having the, the annual cost associated with that, we were looking at doing the, the, uh, ability to plug in at the computer, so not every car is going to always have internet access all the time. You'd use a little, the thing to plug in the USB port?
Right.
And, you know, have a certain amount of those, we're paying the, the service fee on each one of those, instead of having, you know, a dedicated $40 per month account for each vehicle.
Right.
They also have a tax application too.
I'm sorry?
They have tax application, communicate with dispatch through text.
Right. Well, I think that would be definitely something to look into, as far as, uh, with this, with the local cellular companies, there might be some sort of a benefit by having multiple units incorporated into that, and maybe a much cheaper value for that. Um, I'm not sure, but I just think that it would be a real benefit to have that always-on scenario, just because of the, the inherent benefit of having the communication. And I'm not 100% sure on how your radios communicate, but I know there are, there are, there is technology out there as well, that can actually allow your internet connection, your high-speed internet connection, to act as a receiver for your radio, and recommunicate that through the internet. So there might be a scenario where we could actually have an antenna on your vehicle that connects directly through the internet as a porthole, and actually acts as a, a small retransmitter, almost like a tower, your vehicle acts as a tower and uses the internet as the catalyst. So there's just something to incorporate in this. I think that, I think this is all fantastic, you're just throwing some stuff out there that, I mean, the sky's the limit once we get internet in your vehicles, and you guys have real-time access to this information, it's just fantastic. I really appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. And we have looked at the receiver issue, however, at this time, the receiver issue is more expensive than the poor pantry computers.
Totally understand, but I'm, I'm thinking there is a possibility to at least research that, because I think that there is a possibility that they have a product that will literally tap right in and be able to be utilized as a, um, sort of a repeater, and utilizing the internet for that repeater purpose, but...
Yes, if there's something out there, and we can look at it later, that's definitely something that we can maybe do.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So I'm going to make the first part of, uh, Councilmember Harris's, uh, comments. When you're driving along with a police officer, and you see that they have to write things on their hands, or on posted notes, and, and, and juggle while doing everything else, this is what's absolutely needed. If I'm correct, there was the potential of, um, getting laptops back after 9/11, and it just wasn't taken advantage of, and we're finally here again where we can start taking advantage of the situation. So yes, absolutely, we want to get you those computers. Uh, my only thing that I saw in here that I just, I know computers well, don't necessarily know exactly the needs for police work, uh, but when I saw 16 gigs of RAM and a ultra-fast solid-state drive, can you explain to me the reason why there's a need for that? Because I see that there's an additional, almost $400 per computer, uh, because of those needs, and, uh, seeing if we can save some money, or if there's really a need for that?
The 16 gigs versus the 8 gigs is only a $49 increase in price, so I think it's what, $700, $900 bucks, or $900 bucks? And then the, uh, what's the second portion?
The solid-state drive.
All right, I'll go back on another one too, on the, on the RAM issue, so for the, to operate the system we have with the mapping program, 8GB of RAM is the bare minimum we have to have.
Four gigs.
For the richest RIMs to function. So basically, if we want to do anything else on our computer, and not have it bogged down, you know, using every bit of available memory, we have to go up from eight. And the only choice is to go to 16.
Yeah, because they go on doubles, you can't...
Yeah. So, no, if we, if we could go lower, we would, but we, we don't want to be limited to basically just using that. Eventually, we want to have other things, the driver's license scanners, fingerprint scanners, other programs running, and we don't want to give the minimum. As regard, in regards to the, uh, solid-state drive, um, in the past, we've had, um, the MDCs in our cars, had the issues with them, with heat issues mainly, and, uh, for what a lot of their agencies use, they're using solid-state drives, they do better in the high-temperature heat, there's less, there's not the moving parts in the drive. So it's basically due to the heat, and a lot of the vibration issues where a hard drive, um, will have issues from vibration and the bumps, and, uh, with, with not the best roads that we're always driving on, we're trying to limit some of the repairs or breakdowns in the future by going with the SSD drive.
I'm going to have to say that was a really good answer, because there are no moving parts in a solid-state drive, and that takes care of the issue of the vibrating car and everything else.
We fix it for roads, just want to point that out.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Just for the operation, are the officers going to need to remove the laptops from the cars, dock them in the station to download, or is there a wireless transfer?
Yes, everything will be, the system and then, in, on the laptop, will be just like their, their desktop, it'll all be connected to our server, everything is connected, they would not need to come out of the cars.
Good.
Because once you hit the parking lot, you're going to have the ability to access the Wi-Fi of the, uh, police station?
No, it would, we'll use the...
As long as you have the USB, gotcha, gotcha.
Yes, Nick?
I do just want to say one thing, the addition of the MDT in the vehicle takes a tremendous workload off of our already overworked dispatches, where they can run plates themselves, they can run driver's license, warrant checks, uh, 24 hours a day. Uh, they can communicate with each other, uh, through texting, would not have to use our own phones, uh, and it's all recorded, which is, uh, protects the officers down the line on civil, uh, litigation, uh, in, in so women's situations for the city. I've used them before, uh, several of us have, it's, it's just something that is way, way overdue.
Vice Mayor? I'll go ahead with that.
And if I might add, um, the, we built into the new budget you haven't seen yet, uh, for the annual cost, uh, for this, we reduced some in the area that we had excess to add for the, for the cost, and, and we believe that cost to be roughly for this program about $10,000 a year for the annual running of, of this system. Also, uh, we want to install, um, a, a system for Dragon Speech, which is a text, a talk-to-text, so the officers can safely, um, narrate their report while maybe they're sitting in the park, um, you know, providing, uh, law enforcement services there, rather than being hunched over and using the, uh, the keys to type, they can talk to text, which makes them safer as well, and they can be more efficiency, efficient on the reports.
Lieutenant, I still might... I, I think, I think that part, I think that part about the, uh, being able to do a report right fresh as, uh, you're leaving a call, because I know that you guys go call to call to call to call, and having to wait after going to five different calls to come back to the office to write all your reports, um, that's got to be difficult to make sure and keep them all separated in your head, rather than being able to at least start off right away on, on that, so I, I'm really happy about that.
Anything from the public, anyone issued to address, uh, council, or, uh, questions of the officers on this item? Saying none, saying none, I'll close, public comment. Bring you back to the, uh, council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve the, um, I guess, I'll just approve the resolution to, uh, for the consideration for this, uh, sole source pur, sole source purchase of 18 mobile data computers, vehicle mounts, RIM software, Resolution Number 2017-19, Resolution of the City of Clearlake, authorizing the police department to purchase 18 mobile data computers, MDCs, M D vehicle mounts, and RIM software, all that.
In the amount of about $75,000.
No, in the amount of $75,000.
So a motion?
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Although, roll call though, please.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Mayor Firda?
Aye.
Congratulations, good job.
Thank you.
We rounded up the $75,000 on the last item.
Give you a few extra dollars on that thing.
All right, moving on to, uh, item 14, consideration of a memorandum of understanding, MOU with the county for use of county-owned property located on Pond Road. Mr. Folsom?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, current situation is, as you know, we're negotiating, well, we're in the process of getting approved the, uh, ABA Banning Vehicle Authority Funds. Um, we're in the situation where we need a location to be able to drop off those towed vehicles. We've identified that that location is being Pond Road, the property owned by Lakosan, of why it's known as Lake County Sanitation District. Um, the county council has created a short MOU, it's been reviewed by Parsec and our city attorney. Um, unfortunately, the director for Lakosan is out until next week, um, but we would recommend that you authorize me to, uh, sign this MOU, to adopt the MOU, and authorize me to, to sign it.
Very good. Any questions or staff, by council? Vice Mayor?
Um, I just have one major concern with this. I appreciate the, the bid that we received from Enterprise Towing, especially the, uh...
That's on the next slide. This is just using the property on Pond Road.
We're on 14. Oh my goodness. I will hold for that.
I appreciate your enthusiasm. Any questions on this item, by councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Harris?
Just to confirm that we'll be utilizing that property for the purpose of, um, storing the vehicles, um, in... the vehicles in, in the interim before they're transported somewhere else and there's.
Well, I believe it's collection of, dismantling of.
No, not dismantling.
That's why I'm clarifying, specifically why I'm clarifying. We're gonna be using the property for the purpose of a temporary storage for the vehicles while they're in transport from one location to another.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Council, you have a question? Let's, we gotta, can I open it for public? No, I didn't. Gotta open this up for public hearing? Public comment? Anyone wishing to speak?
Contesting neighbors.
Seeing none. Bring it back to council for action. Councilmember Bennett.
Mr. Mayor, I moved if we approve the MOU and authorize the city manager to do the necessary.
Sign.
To sign.
Have a motion or a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Can you tell me who seconded that?
I seconded it.
Councilmember Harris.
Councilmember Bennett.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier.
Aye.
And Mayor Burdock.
Aye. Now, moving on to item 19, 15, excuse me, consideration award a bid for abandoned vehicle authority fund toes. Mr. Becknell.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This is the second part of this process of ramping up the ABA abandoned vehicle abandonment authority. As part of, as part of our responsibilities, we have to have a contract to remove the vehicles. We put out a request for proposals on April 10th, 2017. It was due at 2:00 PM on Monday, April 24th. We received one bid from Pete Lustelow for Enterprise Towing. We reviewed the bid. It met all of the requirements of the IRFP and we're recommending that the contract be approved. I would just say that in this, in this situation, that we can, you know, it's important, we are required to have a contract with a towing agency in order to be able to, to remove these cars and ultimately dispose of them. So this is a necessary element, just as is the pond road aspect of it. So, if you have any answer, any questions?
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
As I was stating earlier, my, my only concern is the notice inviting bids. It's an incomplete notice where at the end it explains how bids can be submitted and it does not complete the sentence. And unless it was recorded differently on the newspaper, I just, I just feel like this was an incomplete, broken process rather than a fully completed process. And I want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a contractual agreement that was not following the appropriate process. So for instance, the first paragraph ends with bids must be submitted on the cities and then it just drops off.
I think, did you talk to Ryan about this?
Yes, I did.
He didn't have an issue with it? I haven't had a chance to have Chrissy up to date on this, but Ryan didn't indicate any issues with it.
Mr. Jones from the law firm of.
Jones and Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
And he reviewed it? Okay. Any other comments or questions of staff?
Just for transparency's sake, in my conversation, there was some concerns from Mr. Jones. I haven't been told otherwise if those concerns were dealt with. I know there is an importance of having a contract. I just want to ensure and I'll ask our current counsel that we have now, that looking at this bid and it being incomplete, does this create potentially any future issues?
I honestly don't have the expertise to answer the question right off the top of my head. This is what I would need to look at the statutes, the public bidding requirements and look at. I mean, so I can't, I can't give you an answer without researching it. I'm sorry.
And you do have the, you see the.
I see, I see it. I understand. I would, I see your issue. I just don't know what the legal requirement is for that to tell you whether that's material or not.
And again, just with counsel from Mr. Jones today on the phone, he did say there was concern, however, that there wasn't a, he didn't see it as being a.
Legal issue?
What was that?
A legal issue?
He didn't see it as a legal issue, but he did see it as a potential issue.
Any other questions on this item? By council. Mr. Harris.
Just have one basic question and this may be a mute point, but I just thought I'd throw it out there. If our contractual agreement with a towing service were to incorporate the terms, a tow is equivalent to a dollar value and anything beyond that would constitute a second, would that in any way, shape, or form have a benefit to us? If the dollar value was a cap on a tow, so let's say one vehicle required X amount of dollars, we could have three or four invoices on one particular tow?
I don't believe so, but that, in one sense, that's one of the things that they are looking at, at the county.
Okay.
With regard to motorhomes.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, when it's a motorhome, they're researching whether that could count as additional toes.
And I'm aware of that, but could, would it be a possibility for, is that not fitted to the AV structure for us to have that agreement with our towing service that he would equilibrate a vehicle to a certain amount of toes and write the invoices as such?
I'm not sure I can answer that until we get the answer from the council as to how the CHP interprets that.
I just thought I'd throw that out there. I have no idea how that could, how that could be worked out and then from what we're waiting to hear back from the county, but I thought maybe directly dealing with our towing service. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions of staff by council, I'd like to open this up for public comment. This is your time to step to the podium, introduce yourself.
I am the owner of Enterprise Towing. And I just wanted to make myself available tonight in case you did have any questions. I might be able to answer for you. If you do, happy to answer.
Thank you, sir, for being here. Mr. Harris.
Just want to verify that you do have experience with towing vehicles. I'm just giving you a part time. Really, what I would say, seriously though, the thing that gets brought up many times and we run into a lot is the, the problem with primarily boats, motorhomes, travel trailers being stuffed and filled with garbage and that sort of debris and that resulting in a significant cost for, you know, for that one particular situation. So is that something that you guys are set up to mediate?
In the contract, if, and I'm not sure exactly what you have, I think you have the total of the contract there. It states under concerns in the back, I attached a page. Because of the potential with motorhomes especially, as you've seen in your photos tonight, it never ceases to surprise me what you can come across. So I tried to make it affordable for the city and taking into consideration the time and stuff, that our basic service we're gonna provide is just to move the vehicle from where it's at to this location and not be going inside these motorhomes, which can have hazardous ways, needles, sewer. And we would just be responsible for towing the vehicle from point A to point B and that would be the end of our services.
Absolutely. I guess that would be covered under the special provisions aspect of this contract.
All right. And just to clarify, we're gonna have another contract coming forward to you as well, which is going to be from the, once it gets to Pond Road, to take it away. There is gonna be a.
That's the hazardous mediation.
Exactly, and the dismantling.
And material mediation.
Take it from there and then remove it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the answers.
Vice Mayor, good.
I have a question for you, and hopefully before my laptop decides to die here. On the scope of work and the number two B, removal of refuse, I see in the contract that you signed that you are saying, we'll tow the cars, but we're not taking care of it. In the scope of work, it seems to say that you, vehicles that contain garbage, trash, and other refuse will be compensated at the applicable vehicle size tow rate is listed in the bid price plus the price per cubic yard basis. The city shall approve. It just almost, because it looks to me, what you wrote, that you are not gonna take care of any of the refuse. You're just towing the vehicle from point A to point B.
Exactly. Because of not knowing what we could come across and not really having the ability to, to, if you got a motorhome that's completely full of trash and now you're saying, I have to figure out a way to take all this trash out of this motorhome or any vehicle before I can process it or move it to your location, it's just really not feasible for us to do it. So that's why I put that in there, is that I would not be responsible for removing trash out of vehicles, but just processing the vehicle to get it from point A to point B and doing so, you know, in the best of our ability. And that's why I kind of put in there too as well, to add to that, is there's been circumstances out there where people will take these motorhomes. I've seen them tear the front of the motorhome off of it and now we have to move it. So there's gonna be some circumstances that we're probably gonna come across. I would think it'd be more rare than, you know, normal, but it's gonna take me working with the city to say, you know, hey, we got this motorhome out there that's mishap the motorhome, you know, to work with you to try to get this stuff moved, you know. That was a concern that I might have too. But as far as the trash and stuff goes, I would not be involved in that part of that.
Councilmember Bennett.
So to say the rent and she saw the abatements we did, we saw that boat up on 30th Avenue. If you got to call to move that boat, you wouldn't be removing that trash, however, you couldn't tow that boat the way it was.
I would tarp the load to make it safe to transport it, but I would not be removing the trash out of the vehicle. In that case there, with a boat like that, it would probably, been sitting so long, the tires would probably rot it off and it wouldn't be safe to go behind a tow truck. So that would be loaded up on a flatbed, tarp to keep the load together and then transport it and drop it off.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Assuming that we get the go-ahead on this project, do you, are you currently prepared to make a significant dent between now and June 1st?
And, and we talked a little bit about this too, is that I would say that an average tow truck on a busy day probably does 10 to 15 toes a day. And you figure in an eight-hour day or a 10-hour day, you probably can do one tow an hour. Depending, like I said, what you come across. If you come across a lot of time squishing the load inside of a vehicle, tarping, it's all gonna be, you know, time, you know, that it takes to do it. But I could have a person available eight or 10 hours a day because this is something I plan to take on myself to do and not my other employees.
Okay. So we could surmise by that then this potentially we could be towing 10 or more cars in a day at a rate of somewhere in the $750 a day round for normal vehicles and that sort of thing?
Depending on what, you know, like I said, how accessible they are, what we have to do to get them moved. But it would just be, you know, as fast as we could do it, we could, you know.
Absolutely. Okay. Well, that's obviously a paramount concern. We just want to get as much done as possible. And are there any, are there any things that we need to work on on our end to make sure that you have, let's say, these are abandoned vehicles, so working towards the access of these vehicles or prepping the vehicles or any kind of background information that needs to be obtained or anything before the tow takes place? I assume a lot of that's already underway with Acting Chief Selly.
And that's, like I said, with the normal difference between this kind of towing and our regular rotation towing, is that for us to go out and to remove these vehicles, the paperwork would already be done by code enforcement or whatever agency wanted us to have them removed. And we would basically be just coming in, giving the paperwork, whatever we would need to move that vehicle and then removing it. So we wouldn't be involved in the process.
As I understand it, you were just providing the transport from point A to point B with the load as a team in its entirety?
Exactly. Not, and the paperwork and stuff should already be done, whatever waiting periods are involved for the property owner to, you know, we're just the transporting agency. We're not involved in any of the actual legal tagging of the vehicles or any of that part of it, or lean sailing them or anything after the vehicle goes to the actual Pond Road facility or wherever it's at.
So my next question would be for Mr. Becknell. If, if we're in, if we're able to get the go-ahead on this, are we in a position right now where we have multiple sitting and ready and ready to go with the paperwork, you know, that sort of thing already completed? So we're kind of just waiting on this resolution?
We have identi, excuse me, we have identified 100 to 150?
Yes, somewhere in that range.
We've identified 100 to 150 vehicles that we are in the process of getting ready to go as soon as money comes from.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're sitting pretty good then. So that essentially right now where we sit, we have 10 to 15 days of work for you based off of that. And we would be trying to move as many as possible, of course, so.
Oh, absolutely.
So we're, so we're sitting in a good position. That was just my curiosity. If we, if all the thousand points of light come together at the same time, how much can we get done in, in that timeframe? So.
Well, and, and the reason that it's important is because the next quarter's distribution under the ABA, it's a two-factor formula. One is based on population, relative population, and based on population, we get 24%. But then the other half of the distribution is based on number of toes. The more we tow, the more of the percentage, the bigger percentage we get. So we have an obvious incentive to move as quickly and as expeditiously as we can because that has a very direct bearing on how much money we get on the next, the next quarter's distribution.
Which is exactly my understanding. So it's nice to know that your, your staff is doing everything possible to make the, the benefit to the community go as far as it can. I appreciate that.
Trust me. And, and it's code enforcement and the police department working jointly to, to get all of this put together is, it, it's not just a simple process. There are a lot of steps you have to go through and there are very specific requirements that you have to comply with. And that was a fairly substantial discussion at the ABA meeting this week. And they kind of got down into the, into the weeds. And there was a big push to make sure that everyone was complying with the rules. And my basic philosophy is I don't care what anyone else does. I just want to make sure we comply with the rules and get it done as quickly as we can.
Right. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
And I, I agree that we are trying to move quickly. I just want to reiterate that I think that sometimes we may need to slow down a little bit and ensure that we review what we're sending out. I'm very concerned that we sent out instructions that were not completed. And I'd also like to give attention to the attachment where I'm hoping that we can maybe exchange it with the reviewed version that obviously I will have to ask Mr. Lustelow to review because that's part of a contract and there's some misspellings and some grammatical errors that I think in a contract we would want to ensure is correct so that it doesn't get distorted in any way in any future situation.
All right. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing none, close it. Thank you, sir, for being here. Action by council. Any further deliberation?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for abandoned vehicle authority funding toes to Enterprise Towing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, authorizing the manager to sign. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bennett.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sabatier.
I'm gonna say nay on this one.
Mayor Burdock.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item 16, which is a rejection of the bids for demolition of structures located at 5768 Crawford Avenue. of structures located at 5768 Crawford Avenue, 2971 Sixth Street, 3292 Ninth Street, 3114 Eighth Street, 2944 Fifth Street, and 3182 Park Street, along with 3373 Eleventh Street and 1349, correction, 13940 Manneke Avenue. Mr. Folsom?
Hey, Ms. Mayor. On March 30th, the city advertised our bidders for the demolition of various structures in the newspaper and on our website as required. We received five bids. Three of them were non-responsive due to lack of documentation, and two were non-responsive due to non-compliance with Section 4101 of the Public Contract Code pertaining to subcontractors. So, our recommendation is to reject all bids on this.
Any questions of staff? Mr. Harris?
I'd like to know if we make a motion to reject the bids, if we go ahead and put this back out for bidding again?
Unfortunately, we've missed the timeline on it. So, we're not able to. Because of the source of the grant funding, they will not extend the bid lines. So, no, we cannot. We will be going after the next round of funding for this, and these will all be ready to go right out the gate. So, these will be the ones that we'll be requesting funding for, and that opens up in August, I believe.
Possibly. If I could recommend, when we go and put that out to bid, we look outside of our immediate area, if that's possible. I don't know if that's possible, to look a little further out of our spectrum to try to invite many more contract, prospective contractors to take a shot at it, because obviously if we're looking at losing funding on situations like this, we need to obtain a correct bid so that we can move forward.
Yes. Vice Mayor?
That's it. That's frustrating.
Mr. Bennett? Nothing. Any question or, any question or comments by the public? Please step forward, do so. Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to reject the bids for the demolition of a structure located at 5768 Crawford Avenue, 2971 Sixth, 3292 Ninth Street, 3114 Eighth Street, 2944 Fifth Street, 3182 Park Street, 3373 Eleventh Street, and 13940 Manneke Avenue.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. And again, Ms. Overton, the opposite. Moving on to the city manager and councilmember reports. Mr. Folsom?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to let you know that Doug and I and citizens caring for Clear Lake did tour the Clear Lake Waste Solutions Material Recovery Facility, otherwise known as MUR, over in Lake Fork and in Ukiah. Very impressive facility. Lieutenant Selly and I also met with Congressman Garamendi last week to discuss some of our concerns about some of the issues that are going on with the federal government with regard to budgets and grants, et cetera. I participated in a one-hour radio show on KPISZ with Joyce Adams and Derek Beeler regarding our efforts to clean up Clear Lake. As everyone is aware, we just cleaned up the property behind Raze. That was a multi-juris, multi-departmental effort, along with a great deal of participation from CC4C. I want to thank Walmart for their participation as well. They are out there helping us pull over 100 shopping carts out of the fields out there that belong to both Walmart and to Raze and to various other retailers throughout the city. We cleaned up well over 100 cubic yards of garbage out of there. As far as Clear Lake Cleanup Day, it was a fantastic success. I want to thank everyone who participated in that. We had a number of volunteers. Again, we did over, I believe it was over 100 cubic yards of garbage from that event. Just overall, fantastic, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom. Mr. Bennett?
My paid report was pretty much done by Mr. Roby. Thank you, Ed. The AVA report was pretty much covered tonight. Those are the two things I've attended in the last couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Harris?
I also attended the AVA meeting on the 19th. I was out of state for the most recent AVA meeting, unfortunately, because it sounds like a lot of important discussion took place, and I missed it. The 22nd, I did participate in the Clear Lake Cleanup, and I just want to thank the citizens that came out on that day to participate. It was an enormous amount of assistance throughout the entire, the entire city, and it really made a huge difference. And I hope we can just work towards keeping it that way. It's frustrating. And I want to encourage everybody, based off our discussion here today. We had, we had a report brought to us on the payboard status, and, you know, anybody that watches this on Channel 8, obviously, is, you're watching payboard TV. So, one thing I want to tell you is that they need talent. They need people to come forth and be a local TV host, or bring ideas, or storyline, or some sort of even comedy, or whatever it is you're interested in, to be the talent. So, contact the payboard, payboard here at the city hall, and be involved in it, because they're desperately looking for people to bring the content, and we need local content. So, if you're somebody that's in the fishing know, or if you're somebody that's in any way connected with anything that you're passionate about in our community, bring your talent and come see the payboard, because they really need that. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
I too took part in the cleanup. While I do share our city manager's excitement, it's also very saddening to see what people choose to do to our environment, to our city, whether that's people coming from outside and dumping here, whether it's people who live here that choose to dump here. It really saddens me that some people can go to sleep knowing that that's what they did to us. Granted, it's awesome to have the level of volunteerism that we have here in order to be able to try and rectify that problem of people choosing to disrespect our environment and our city. After the cleanup, I had an Earth Day Festival and an Andy Day Event. For those who don't know, we celebrate Andy Day because of a young gentleman whose name was Andrew Daniel Johnson, who at the age of 16 gathered community support to build a skate park, and with the support of the city council and other community members was able to do so. And unfortunately, at the age of 18, he passed away in a car crash on his way to a musical performance in Oregon, I believe. And so, this is why our skate park is named Andy Johnson Skate Park. And so, every year we celebrate the life and legacy of Andy Johnson. So, I thought I'd make sure that everybody was aware as to why we celebrate that. And overall, the festival was great. I do want to thank Public Works. There was a gentleman by the name of Alex Martinez. I believe he also helped with the Bayberry Inc. Cleanup that occurred on Friday. I know that they gave him kudos for the tremendous help that he was at the event to make sure they had everything they needed, and I can't, I don't feel any different. Having him there during the event shows a level of support that the city has not typically shown for activities happening on their park, and I really appreciated that. So, thank you to city manager and also Public Works for putting that together. Other than that, that's, oh, and starting this Friday, sorry, I know you, it's 9:30. Starting this Friday and Saturday at 7:30 PM, please go to Lower Lake High School and go watch Sister Act. The Lower Lake High School Drama Club is putting on that performance, and if you can't go in the evenings, go on Sunday at 2:00 PM. Make sure to not miss our youth doing their thing in performing arts.
Thank you. Real quickly, I'd like to thank city manager and Mr. Becknell for hosting a meeting. We had to make some financial changes in our bonds, get those at a new interest rate. So, I appreciate all the work you guys did on that and bringing that community together to do that. So, I did that. Went on April 19th to Sacramento, to the Capitol for legislative action day hosted by the Lake California League of Cities. The league is very active in specific strategic goals. Number one, to increase funding for critical transportation and infrastructure, water infrastructure within the state. You might be familiar with AV1 that just passed. They're really excited in Sacramento about that. Also, in developing realistic responses to homelessness and the homeless crisis. So, one of the things the league is working on, and improving the affordability of workforce housing and securing additional funding for housing. And then last, addressing public safety impacts for the reduced sentencing laws, protecting local priorities, and implementation of the AUMA, and preserve city rights to deliver emergency medical services. So, those are the things that the league is working on. Had opportunity to meet with not just our assembly member, Celia Aguilar Curry, on some of the projects that she's working on, AV707 specifically, which will help our Clear Lake to clean it and to do, have additional fundings for study through UC Davis. It's pretty exciting. She also was speaking and testifying on the floor regarding a bill for geothermal. Geothermal, unfortunately, had been cut out of a bill that had been proposed. She amended that bill and asked that it be included, her amendment be included, and requested testimony by local folks from Lake County here in support of that. Specifically, geothermal was left out. They're focused on solar and wind power. Geothermal had been left out, and obviously that impacts us and our residents that work at the geothermal site, particularly Calpine. So, that was interesting. I was glad I was there to be able to help her with that. But again, looking at some of the things we're dealing with locally, and it's very exciting. I'd like to thank the members at Adventist Health Clear Lake. The hospital has come up with and provided a grant of $300,000 to work a project primarily in South County area to help specific selected homeless individuals or people in need that are in crisis. They're not able, due to mental or physical disabilities, to help themselves. So, the hospital's stepping up to help with that. I'd like to thank Lieutenant Selly. He's attended all the meetings. Fortunately, I've had to miss a couple. But there's good work going on. I know that a lot of people don't see that. It's oftentimes we catch in social media some heat about, you know, you passed the road tax, but you're not working on the roads yet. Again, it's coming. We have to collect the money first before we can actually start spending it. But we are making provisions for that. So, just really quickly, that's what I've been doing. Also attended the Clear Lake Cleanup. I'd also like to thank Public Works, but also city law enforcement staff and the VIPs that provided security and traffic control for those volunteers walking down Lake Shore Drive and Olympic. Couldn't have done it, couldn't have done safely without their help. So, thank you, Lieutenant, for that. Always appreciate it. I'd like to point out something, though, that I've never seen before. Kudos to Lieutenant Selly and his family. Kudos to our fire chief and his family, who came out and volunteered their time to help clean up, painting out graffiti and doing that kind of thing. I really appreciate it. So, thank you very much to you. Thank your wife. And I'll pass this also along to Chief Sepeda. Oftentimes, our first responders and things, they don't get any, get their hands dirty sometimes. I think they get used to that because it's their day-to-day work, but it's good when you're shoulder-to-shoulder with them, and it shows your care for our community, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Moving on to agenda items. Does anyone have anything for future agenda items?
Yes, I do. Mr. Mayor?
Good advice.
With the situation happening behind Raze and the work that the high-
Utilizer-
Utilizer group has been doing, and also some of the conversations that have been had here in city hall with the Cornerstone Village, I'd like to request that we look at possibly forming a homelessness ad hoc committee to keep pushing for what I hope could be the start of a partial solution for those that want to take part in that program that we can put together.
Okay. I concur. Do we have consensus?
Sure.
So, we have a 4-0 as far as consensus.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk. I would also like to add to that, that we do have a very good group meeting with our utilizers, and I want to be specific on that definition, or as specific as I can be. But we're looking at people who are impacting not just law enforcement, not just fire and emergency services that way, and ambulance EMS, also the emergency department at our local hospitals. And when you collectively take the amount of impact of these individuals, we're spending millions of dollars. We're seeing, we're trying to see, or come up with a plan, and I believe we have one in place, that we'll be sharing on May 3rd at the CERN at Marymount College, of what this will be. And it's pretty exciting, but I think that those people would be good members for our ad hoc, since they come from all the different disciplines of the hospital, Lake County Mental Health, social services, NCO, et cetera, et cetera. So, I agree, and I'll work to try to bring those to the table. I'm also excited. We've got, unfortunately, the assembly member and Senator McGuire will be able to attend, but they are sending their aides and directly bring reports back. So, the information we share at the summit will be brought back to Sacramento, because we're looking for additional funding whenever we can get it. I'd like to bring, we had presentations earlier in the meeting from CMOS and the art gallery for the youth art project, and what I would like to do is authorize our city manager, if you agree, to bring that back to us when it's inconvenient. So, we might have, provide approval for that, should it come to fruition.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Isn't that-
The mural?
Yes. Yes. And I have nothing more. Anyone else? Very good. Did we make it, Beth?